Alright, good evening, everybody. It's nine o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I get a roll call vote, sorry, roll call.
Heather Owen.
Here.
Annette Yestek.
Here.
John McPherson.
Here.
Virginia Mendoza is joining us via conference call. Jaime Fernandez.
Here.
Mary Claypool.
Present.
Sandra Ocampo.
Here.
Dr. Gigi Gus.
Present.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Stroud, can you lead us? Lead us in the conference.
Pledge of allegiance.
We to the back of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
We The, yes, we are requesting that you will include the meeting in honor of this individual who passed away.
Do you want me to read this right here? So it's Jane Allen. After graduating from Dell Valley High School in 1964, Jane attended San Jose State University and received her teaching credentials. During college, she spent her summers as a camp counselor at Camp Concord in Lake Tahoe, where she formed some of her favorite memories. Upon graduating college, she joined the AmeriCorps Vista program, which took her to Chicago and later Cleveland. After her time at Vista, she moved back to California and began her career as an elementary school teacher. In 1979, a teaching opportunity brought Jane to her beloved community of King City. Over her thirty years, Ms. Allen worked as an educator in a variety of roles and grade levels. She truly loved teaching, and it showed an impact she had on the students she taught. So we will close in memory of Jane Allen.
And let me just
My son's third grade teacher.
She was your what?
My son's third grade teacher.
Oh, wow. And I just wanted to add that that was sent to us by Board Member Emeritus Ron Canzira.
Are there any other additions or changes? Can I get a motion to
Sure.
Second. All, we have to roll call votes.
Heather Owen.
Aye.
Annette Yestek.
Aye.
John McPherson.
Aye.
Virginia Mendoza. Jaime Fernandez. Mary Claypool.
Aye.
Sandra Ocampo.
Aye.
Motion passes. Communications, do we have any correspondence?
No.
No correspondence. Oral comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. I need to make a correction to the minutes. So on three, sorry. Here. On eleven, three on the minutes, it's the PSA video is not on Fentanyl, it's on social media safety.
So with that
So, okay, is there, so with that correction, can I get a move to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Thanks.
Hey, can I get a roll call vote?
Heather Owen.
Aye.
Annette Yestek. Aye. John McPherson.
Aye.
Virginia Mendoza. Virginia, do you vote?
Aye.
Jaime Fernandez. Yes. Yeah, now we have. Mary Claypool.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're gonna move on to for staff recognition, four point one, MCOE, main employees of the month for May two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and I'm looking around the room, looking for those employees, and it sounds like is Costa gonna be sneaking? Okay, then I'm gonna come back to him, and Dylan, I don't see Dylan out in the audience. Okay, well, or actually, could I ask you, Ben, we'll skip and go to your person, is he?
I don't see him, but he was coming, right? Well, they said he was coming, or he said he was coming, but you know, he's got a busy classroom, so.
So, Madam Chair, can I request that we come back to you for the month, because I do believe that we have at least two of the three who are going to come, and
Okay, we will come back to that. So there's no unfinished business action items, we're gonna move on to new business action items. Six point one nomination of Association of California County Boards of Education, ACCBE, member representative. It's on page fifteen in the agenda, and Dr. Gus.
Yes, so we received an email from ACCBE requesting that our county board nominate one individual who can be the representative or the liaison between ACCBE and our county board. And you see on the cover letter there that some duties of the liaison include regular updates to the board on ACCBE activities, attending ACCBE events, recruiting volunteers to join the committees, and helping with special projects that align with their experiences, skills, and interests. And so if it please the board, if you would like to select one member to be that liaison, we will then send that name into ACCBE.
Any discussion on this item? Mary.
Yeah, I had a question. What are the associated calls that would follow this? I assume I don't know whether meetings are held. Are they held locally?
So, so far, and remember, this is a very new organization, so I'm gonna do my best to answer that question, but so far, all of the trainings have been online trainings. I'm not yet aware of any in-person trainings. The liaison, other than what you see listed here, we don't know if they would be expected to attend any in-person type of events, because as I said, the organization is just forming. So this is the information that we have, and I'm guessing that the expectation would be mostly that you're the person who attends all of those online trainings, or as many as you can, and try to keep the rest of the board informed about the ACCBE activities.
Any volunteers?
Well, I'm already doing the CSBA, so I feel like maybe someone else should have the opportunity.
Anybody want, anybody else want the opportunity?
I was thinking like you're already there, might as well keep doing it.
Different, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Virginia? Alright, I will do it.
Thank you.
You were my, you were my, you were my suggestion.
What did you say, Virginia? Okay, so if all the board members, when you speak, please turn on your speaker. And I do apologize to everyone in the room, that loud noise is our projector up there, and it is trying to cool down. So once the room cools down, the projector
I just need to be sure that I understand this. I don't have, I'm not able to speak, and I won't be able to speak. Is that right?
Correct, it's just a phone call. Yes, but you can speak, you can speak.
Well, I can, I cannot hear everybody. I hear some people way far away when they're talking. It's not, I don't have a, whatever.
So please, all board members, turn on your mics and lean in to speech.
So, Virginia, we were talking about the ACCBE representative from our board. And they are looking for someone to be a liaison between our board and the ACCBE. And those people would attend the ACCBE committee meetings. They would attend ACCB events, and they would recruit volunteers for the ACCB committees and help with special projects that align with the person's experiences, skills, and interests. So we are looking for someone to volunteer to do that.
Thank you. So we
Another two.
Can't get out of it.
Okay, can we, can we get a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Heather who has, Heather Owen, who has volunteered to do this.
Second. All the, roll call vote, please.
Heather Owen.
Aye.
Annette Yestek. John McPherson.
Yes.
Virginia Mendoza.
Yeah.
Jaime Fernandez.
Yeah.
Mary Claypool.
Aye.
Sandra Ocampo.
Aye.
Okay, motion has been approved. And we are on to item six point two, request to attend the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials radio conference on July twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. This is on page seventeen in your agenda, and this goes to Dr. Gus.
Yes, so as per our board policy, board members who would like to attend conferences that are not the CSBA conferences within the state of California, must bring this request to the entire county board. We do have two board members who would like to attend this conference, Sandra Ocampo and Virginia Mendoza, Virginia H. Mendoza. So it's a pleasure for
There any discussion on this item?
Annette?
I have discussion. I, last year, Sandra attended, which I appreciated, I, you know, I've heard of Naleo, I don't, is that how you say it? Is it Naleo?
Okay, Naleo before, but I didn't know that much about it. I really appreciated your write-up of what you went to and what you were you know, what you learned that you brought back to our board. On the other hand, I felt like all of the items that you, all of the things that you wrote up on were things that could be done at CSBA or other in-state trainings, and in fact, much more directly related to what we do as county board members. For instance, the Harbor Freight Tools idea of a program, the, the the idea of it was about internships for our students. I think that's wonderful. This was one. At CSBA, there probably were twenty different options for that, because it's a focus on education. The AI write-up, again, very good write-up, but AI, there were probably eight sessions at our in-state CSBA that, that focused on that, and, and human trafficking, we have local things that we're doing locally. I, I just, I don't see the benefit of spending our public dollars on a conference that isn't a focus on education for California County Board members. This year, the, the conference, I appreciated that the agenda was given to us, and certain things were highlighted for us. In particular, there was one about education track, was fostering school board and superintendents and hiring a superintendent. But as a county board member, we don't hire the superintendent. The county board member is elected by the people of the county. And so I don't see the benefit of that for us as county board members. The other things that were highlighted weren't really education-related. To me, twenty-five hundred dollars per person, per board member, which is a total of five thousand dollars, for something that doesn't necessarily benefit the public, and I feel very strongly that we are fiduciaries of the public dollars, that we should at least consider other options that are less expensive, in-state, focusing on California county board member education. And so that, I, I would like to hear from other board members if they have any other thoughts on this. But after I did the research on it, I don't see the, the true benefit of spending that.
Thank you, Annette. John?
Yeah, so you know, my, my time on the board, the, the board, to a next point, has always been very, very conscientious about the, the spend on this item, or board members to travel and attend conferences with a focus on California. Now, last year, the conference was in Las Vegas, which I kind of consider a suburb of Los Angeles, so I wasn't, I wasn't too concerned about that. The one thing that we did this year was for Virginia to go to Washington DC, which was ACSBA conference. It was a California conference in Washington DC. So I have to agree with Annette. This, for me, to, for this conference, which is not California, just education-specific, not really education-specific, to, to send two members to Atlanta, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with that.
Jaime?
And, and just to share, this is my same concern that I had last year about going to Las Vegas and now Georgia. Virginia's going to Washington already. I, I just don't see the need to send two people, or even one person, to attend a Georgia. When we're gonna hopefully get the same thing, we haven't seen the schedule yet, obviously, but in Monterey, you just do one. But I just don't see why we'd spend that.
Jaime, Mary, did I see you again?
Oh, I didn't have my hand up, but I mean, I was kind of on the fence about it. I don't think it's educational-based. And if it was more education involved in it, I think I'd feel more comfortable with it. But it seems more like, and yes, we're elected officials, but I think these are different types of elected officials that they're focusing on, not board members or county board members. So I'm a little reluctant to say that this is something we should find at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sandra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate everyone's concern. As you keep saying, that this is not related to education whatsoever at all. I do understand your concerns about spending the tax dollar money, you know. And I do understand why you're so much in the box in just thinking CCBE and CSBA. Because to the county board, I've been here for three years, and what I'm learning so far from the county board members is that they don't think outside of that box at all. They're always in the same protocol, just following the protocol. And I'm coming from another scenario, where I like to think out of the box and apply it to different scholarships, if it is possible, or non, nonpartisan negoti, nonpartisan foundations like Naleo.
I'm excited to hear.
Turn on, your mic on.
It's on, my microphone is on.
She can't hear.
She can't hear you, so she speaks loud.
So, you know, this is an issue that, that it happens to me, when I, when I requested in my first application, I had to really fight, I will say it simple and direct, fight to make you understand that this is a huge necessity as an elected official, to go out of the, of the inside box and see what else is there. And I remember, you know, going to Naleo since nineteen ninety-one, when I got elected the first time. And Salina United High School District never, ever, ever, ever thought about how some of you are thinking, that this is not in education-related, that this is something that we, I can find through CSBA. I'll tell you why. How could you say that without even knowing the system, the organization, and attending one of your conferences? How could you say that so clearly? I mean, this is to me, you know, unacceptable to pre-charge a nonpartisan conference that targets education to students. And it says it here, and this is why I provided it to you, the information very clearly, the overview that is focused on Naleo education. So you're saying Naleo has nothing to do with education? How could you say that, when on the last conference, I get to talk to the Secretary of Education in Naleo Conference? Plus, not because it's a Latino Naleo conference, it target only Latinos. It's a diversity of people that attend these conferences, you know, Asians, Americans, African-Americans, and Mexican-Americans. So what I'm trying to say to you, dear county board members, is that I do respect, you know, your decision. But it's, it's, it's amazing to say that none of these conferences are related to education, none of them. Okay, and so what I read out to you, public of the audience, is this. One of that is gonna be governance track, the new financial landscape for state and local governments. You might ask yourself, if this is related to the issue? So if you go to this conference and learn what this is all about, and if there are issues that are worth it to bring to the county board, you know, it has to be in education, because we're focusing about the near loss in education. Okay? I understand where you're coming from, you want to say something in education, landscaping, education, whatever, this is what I'm getting you that you're coming against my proposal. The next one is the Trump administration and different changes in the federal policies around immigration and education health and energy entering foreign language. So there's education, it's right, it's written there. So I'm questioning you, did you ever had a chance to read it through it and understand that? You did. So the, the question of education, you probably missed it, because it's stayed in there. Now, when you're saying that only CSBA and CCBA provides this education. I'm gonna prove you wrong. When I attended in Naleo years ago, there was a presentation from Bank of America. They were saying, we can loan you money to provide housing for school teachers, not to CSBA, ever. So what did I do? I wrote down my report, I presented to my superintendent, and now we ended, before I left my position as support trustee from Salina High School District, we end, I, I, we end up building fifty units on Apple Street to house fifty school teachers. So those conferences, you don't get it through CSBA, because CSBA is more targeted into education issues, not in general issues. And when I'm talking about general issues, it's the Latino elected officials from Naleo who go to different trades, sometimes they're not all posted here, because this, this information is really new. So by the time they finish writing up the agenda, some of the workshops are not listed in this page. Okay, and so you're not aware of it. I am aware of that, see. So I, I said, you know, the cost, we have a budget of five thousand dollars. Is that, Madam Chair, five thousand dollars for trustee?
It was, I think it was two thousand five hundred each.
No, 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 no. No, the general budget for us, for every trustee.
There is, and it's just a
I'm, I'm just asking a question because I'm not familiar.
Are, are you that, I think what your question is, is what is the budget for traveling conference?
For every single trustee. Show us to know what each trustee is allocated.
It's not allocated by each trustee. There is one pot of money for the county board for traveling conference.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And again, last year, when I attended it, in Naleo conferences, I attended at a workshop that now, in twenty, that was twenty twenty-four, now in twenty twenty-five, this workshop is, is coming to us through an invitation to provide scholarships and adult education in vocational careers through an agency called Harbor Freight Tools. And that link came out not through CCBE or CSBA, it came out through the Naleo Conference that I attended it. Hopefully, that link will be taken care of this coming June. Madam, Dr. Gus, right? It'll be a Zoom meeting with Mr. Penn?
Yes, we, sorry. Yes, we do have a Zoom meeting set up with Mr. Penn.
And, and thank you, Madam, thank you, Dr. Gus. And through this link, hopefully, the county will be providing information to every high school district, how can we connect to be partners with Harbor Freight Tools? Because they do provide scholarships to increase the time to work for them. And eventually, if they stay there, they provide them for their whole career of becoming an engineer in technology or a school teacher, whatever. So I'm excited to bring in that link now and, and beginning to work with this partnership. Hopefully, we'll get something going. Why is it happening? Because it went through Naleo conferences. So I, I will really, really invite you guys instead of just pre-churching a nonpartisan agency that is provides all kinds of money to students through scholarships. Thanks to Bill Gaines and Leonard Gaines, they donated million dollars in the education board policy. That money goes back to the Latinos, not just the students, but across the board. So I am very familiar with this process, because like I mentioned before, through the high school district, all the trustees, the superintendent will never have these issues of saying, this is not educational-related. We have CSBA, we have CC, not CCBE, because now we don't, we don't do. But I can never have these issues, and we keep going as a whole group, bring good information and implement it in our high school district, Salina United High School District. So this one is kind of understandable, I don't understand that, why you are so reluctantly not supporting it. Maybe because it's a national association of elected Latino officials. Maybe because of that, you think that it has to do with Latinos issues only. But I question you again, what's the percentage of students that we have nationwide that we represent? Is it eighty-seven percent of students that are Mexican or Latinos? That some of these Naleo issues could be addressed and helped those students, as we combine combat and provide the full report? And try to open avenues that are different from CCSBA only? I think it's, it's a lot of things that, you know, we as board, as county board are missing out by not stepping out of that box. And please do not compare CSBA with the Latino organizations. They're two different integrities, and they do represent different avenues, but they're all in the same issue, education. What I don't see with CCSBA is any workshops in about healthcare, in about housing, at all. No, I know, I know, I know that, I know that. Let me finish that up, okay? They don't deal with that. But when you go to these conferences, they're talking generality. Okay, so when you go there and spend twenty-five hundred dollars, not just in education, you're coming back with more stuff, maybe related to education. So. I mean, just for, just for the, um, just for the public. Like you mentioned a while ago, um, another training for that will be. Fostering the school board in Superintending, okay? That's education. In, in any way that you want to name it, that's working to finding ways to better serve the education. Um, so. That is all I gotta say that I, um, I just found it, um, unattractive. Uh, and this is my opinion. That when it comes to issues that it deals with. Education. It's, it's just the same cycle that I'm getting here, you know? CSBA and then that's it, CSBA deals with perfect key, CSBA we deal with this. But let me just finish by reading this to you, just for the record. An overview of Naleo Focus on Education. Through Naleo Education Fund Leadership Initiative. Naleo assisted and elected and appointed officials with technical assistance and training and networking opportunities. Designed to increase their effectiveness in as educational policymakers and advocates. With a focus on the entire educational pipeline from preschool to graduate studies. The Naleo portfolio offers a concrete overview of the state Latino education and strategies for improving the academic success of Latino students. According to the U.S. report, the student body at the school served by the Monterey County Office of Education is eighty-seven, is eighty-two percent. Hispano and Latino. This demographic underlines the relevance of the work being accomplished by Naleo in the education. So the network being in undertaking by the trustees of Monterey County Board of Education. Naleo is a five-one C, nonpartisan. And I'm reading this because last year Mary Claypool had a question that she thought, and also, um, and then. Uh, that, um, these conferences was political. Conferences is not a political, it's a nonpartisan management. And according to the Naleo website, uh, in two thousand twenty-two, they received up ten millions. From a myriad of foundations and one of the largest founders of Naleo is Bill and Linda Gates Foundation. So when I see these big names in foundation and giving money away, you know? Out up to a, um, nonpartisan foundation that represents K to twelve and post-secondary education. I'm questioning myself. What kind of a Naleo work he's doing? To get the support of these individuals? Well, what they're doing, they're getting this money and spending it in scholarships to support, to support all those students that are not able to afford their career.
Sandra, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we need to table this item.
I, I, I told you, Mary Chair, that I was gonna wrap it up by reading this and I'm done, okay? So with that in mind, um, also. Every time there's a conferences of another kind, um, conferences. It's just kind of, um, begin to bother me. They will never discuss other conferences, are they really? Yeah, just or not? But just the idea of having someone attending a conferences that is different than, than, than A Leo. You know, I'm always willing to support you and be there for you. Uh, and you know, that goes to tell me that no matter what you do, so really trying to work as a, as a, as a team board. I cannot explain myself, um, well enough to make you understand that this for me is a priority. And. That's, that's all I gotta share.
All right, thank you.
More than that, I cannot say.
We're gonna table this for, um, for now because we need to move on to our time certains. We've got the night, we're the nine fifteen, right, nine fifteen, um, early investment report for period ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five is item eight point one, Dr. Stanley.
Yes, good morning. Um, we have Jake ready to go right there as soon as we can get his PowerPoint up. And, and while we're working on that, there we go. Um, and just, um, my, the most important point for me is that, um, our interest rate is now, uh, four point three zero. That is the rate, no, it was four point three zero, so we've gone down point oh two percent, just so you know. So very similar, but you can see that we're on the, on the downward trend.
You have to say spoiler alert before you say that.
Oh, sorry, spoiler alert.
Uh, good morning, everyone, Jake Stroud, Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector. Uh, thank you for your patience this quarter as our report was just approved by our board yesterday. So the full report is forthcoming, but nevertheless, I'm here happy to walk through some of our work, um, in the treasury for last quarter. So we'll start with a market and economic update. And right off the bat here, we have our new T word, we used to talk about transitory, we're gonna talk about tariffs. Uh, which have been initially quite the curve ball for the Federal Reserve as well as consumer sentiment, and we'll talk more about that. Uh, the labor market continues to do well, kind of holding things together, serving as a backbone. And we are going to look more at goods inflation as well, that continues to kind of stick around and be troublesome. Uh, related to the Federal Reserve's two percent inflation apartment. Regarding the Federal Reserve, they did pause their rate cuts again during the quarter as well as last week. So the federal funds rate remains at four point three five to four point five percent. But we are still anticipating two cuts in twenty twenty-five.
Two?
Two, yes, and I have a slide on that as well, two twenty-five basis point cuts, so fifty is the, according to the dot plot that we'll talk about. So regarding the bond market, as we know, as I've probably said before, uh, markets don't like uncertainty, so yields did drop and there was kind of a reinversion, uh, towards the front end of the curve. But also some widening of spreads despite continually tight between sectors, opportunities for yields. So I'm gonna move on to our next slide here and I will show a quick slide on the labor market that I just referenced. I think Chair Powell's quote at the top really sums things up the best. Essentially that hiring is slow, as you can see by the, the colored graphs on the right side. Uh, but the unemployment rate continues to remain low at four point one percent as of February of twenty twenty-five. So here is our slide relating to goods inflation and overall PCE and core PCE. And you can see that they did tick up on the left to two point five percent for PCE and two point eight percent for core PCE. Again, the Federal Reserve's goal is two percent. And you can see on the right side of the screen that, as I've talked multiple times, services continue to be a large portion of the inflation represented by the dark blue bar. Um, on the right, the dark blue bars, but you can also see that both durable goods and non-durable goods inflation. Were, were positive or contributing to the inflation during last quarter. Durable goods being things that last, for example, maybe furniture, uh, non-durable goods, more commonly food, things that don't last. So this slide is dedicated just to give you an idea of how policy changes, um, have impacted consumer sentiment. And how some of those changes may impact inflation as well. You can see on the left that President Trump, um, with his number of executive orders during that timeframe. Pretty much is a combination of every other president represented on the slide there. Um, and that did contribute to a decreasing consumer sentiment in the upper right portion of. Uh, the slide in front of you as well as expectations for inflation due to tariffs in the first year. So here is the Federal Reserve's latest dot plot and it's actually almost identical to the last time that I was here. But as I mentioned before, you can see twenty twenty-five on the bottom. By year end, they are anticipating two rate cuts and the median has not changed from December to March. When we look at the treasury yield curve, I did reference the decreases on kind of my intro slide there. Um, you can also see the reinversion, uh, represented by the dark blue bar is the most recent quarter with light blue and yellow, the previous two quarters. Front end of the curve remains attached to the federal funds rate. And the rest of the curve kind of reflects expectations. So there was a dip that kind of causes that inversion that we're used to seeing. On kind of the far left of the blue as well as the chart shows you all of the decreases quarter compared to quarter for each of the. Treasuries that are out there. Here is our chart of the two-year treasury yield, which you can see finished the quarter down from the previous quarter by thirty-six basis points. Again, that's kind of a benchmark for us to look at. And so let's move on and look at the portfolio in more details. We'll start with our typical summary page and I like to start in the upper left with the values. You can see we're right at three point one billion dollars. Our average maturity is five hundred and seven days. The rate that we referenced is four point two eight percent and over thirty-three million dollars brought in in the quarter in interest earnings. Moving to the right on this slide, we have credit quality. So safety first is, is always our first objective, uh, safety of the portfolio, uh, is high due to, in part due to great credit quality. Fifty-seven percent of the portfolio is, is double A, as you can see by the dark blue. Moving down, our maturity distribution represents our second goal, which is liquidity. And we do have a very diverse maturity distribution, as you can see. All those bars represent when our investments, uh, mature or the, the principle comes back to us. Large portion of our portfolio right now is in the sweet spot of one to three years. Uh, that's actually almost half the portfolio currently, if you look at the one to two years and the two to three years bars. The colorful, uh, pie chart on the bottom left represents our sector distribution, which are all the different types of investments that we have. U.S. Treasuries as usual do lead the way in our portfolio, forty-nine percent. Uh, definite increase over the last few quarters in corporates, we're at twenty-two percent there. And this is kind of a zoomed in look at the last pie chart that I just talked about because it shows not only the dollar amount within each of the sectors, but also our sector limit. For our investment portfolio, our investment policy rather, excuse me, and our current allocation all within the sector limit. This slide is just a bit more colorful graphic display of the history of the sectors that we've been invested in. And the, the red outline is intended to show you all kind of an increase in, uh, two things. Corporates and CDs or certificates of deposit in recent months, given opportunities for yield there. Here is our full issuer list that I always show, I won't read all of those to you, but you'll have them in your report. Those are all of the individual agencies that we do invest in. And our final informational slide kind of wraps things up here showing you each of the past four quarters. Uh, gross earnings of a hundred and thirty, over a hundred and thirty-three million dollars. There's our yield again at four point two eight percent and the earnings for the quarter. With that, I will put up our certificate of compliance for our work during the quarter as well as our typical disclaimer. And I'm here to answer or research any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments?
Chuck. Yeah, um, does your office have any outlook on the California state budget situation going forward? Is that something you look at or something you consider?
We do as a county and as an office, always consider the California state budget and look at where there might be impacts to, uh, our different departments. As of right now, we don't anticipate any negative impacts to our department. Um, but yeah, good question, that is part of our budget cycle that we review that as a company and report out any impacts to that. And, and there may be concerns outside of our office that I wouldn't be able to speak to as well because I know there are impacts there. But, uh, none for the Treasury Tax Collectors Office and contributor. Thank you for the question, though. Any other questions? All right, well, let's all continue with business and I'll be back next quarter. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our next time certain, which is eight point two, presentation of resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-nine, National Foster Care Month. And it's going to be presented to Eva Geronimo.
Yes, and she's sneaking. There we go, she's sneaking in the door right now. Sorry, we have a few folks waiting out in the hallway. Eva, come on up to the front, please, please, please. And Justin, if you could also join her. Uh, as you all know, on our team, Justin Parker is our foster youth expert and he works very closely with Eva. Um, they have monthly ILT meetings where all of the agencies get together and do cross collaboration to ensure that every one of our foster youth students. Um, their needs are met, they know how to access resources. And now we have a beautiful introduction of Eva and then Justin might want to add a little bit more to that introduction.
The county board is honored to present the National Foster Care Month Resolution to Deputy Director of Family and Children's Services from Monterey County. Eva Geronimo, is that, is that how you say it? She's been a tireless advocate for the well-being of foster youth, leading efforts to strengthen support systems that ensure safety, stability and opportunity for every child in her care. Her leadership reflects a deep commitment to building partnerships that uplift families and provide the tools young people need to thrive. Under Deputy Director Geronimo's guidance, Monterey County continues to expand trauma-informed services. Improve placement stability and promote pathways to competency and success for foster youth. The county's work is rooted in compassion, collaboration and equity. And is helping to create a future where all children, regardless of their circumstances, are seen, valued and supported. Today, we are proud to recognize Eva Geronimo and her Monterey County Social Services team for, team members for their dedication and impact.
Yeah, like Justin, did you want to add anything?
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Dr. Gass, President O and members of the board. Um, it's, it's an honor to be here today to help, uh, give this proclamation to, to Eva and Family and Children's Services. The, the work that they do is just goes unnoticed by a lot of the community and it's, it's one of the hardest jobs out there in our county. The, uh, you know, protecting our children, our most vulnerable students, uh, our most vulnerable student population and ensuring, uh, that they have. The tools that they need to be successful, um, that they're safe, protected and their needs are being met. Um, Eva's leadership, um, has really expanded our collaboration between our two agencies. Um, and it's, it's an absolute privilege to help, uh, present this proclamation to them, so thank you.
And then Eva, would you like to say a few words before we do the honor?
Good morning, everybody, I, I'm honored to receive this and I, I would also like to say that I could not do the work that I do without the support of my team. My social workers and my social work supervisor has been part of my leadership team are key to ensuring that, excuse me, we're able to. Continue to collaborate and support all of our youth in Monterey County that happen to be working in our mini systems. And so I'm so appreciative of receiving this today and I also want to thank, um, Family and Children's Services and members of the community and the collaboration and the time they take to support. Uh, this difficult work, challenging and rewarding work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I'm gonna read, sure, want me to read a little bit? Okay, so I'm gonna read a little bit of the resolution. Um, National Foster Care Month, um, whereas in Monterey County Board of Education recognizes the month of May as National Foster Care Month. To heighten awareness that children in foster care need love, support, security and a place to call home. And whereas in alignment with this year's theme, engaging youth, building supports, strengthening opportunities. Foster care programs play a vital role in nurturing strong supportive relationships by providing a safe and stable environment. For children and youth who have been removed from their homes due to abuse, neglect or other circumstances that prevent them from safely remaining at home. And whereas during National Foster Care Month, the Monterey County Board of Education recognizes and celebrates the important role. That members from all parts of the child welfare system play in supporting children and foster youth in care to help them develop healthy connections. Maintain and strengthen family and cultural ties, find permanent homes and provide them with resources to lead happy and rewarding life. And it goes on a little bit. I'm gonna get to the end. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Monterey County Board of Education does hereby adopt Resolution Number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-nine, to recognize the month of May as National Foster Care Month, and calls upon agencies, organizations, schools, and the public to observe this month by coordinating awareness efforts and activities that recognize foster youth organizations and programs to improve the well-being for our children and foster youth. So congratulations. Thank you so much.
And Eva and your team, if you'd like to.
I'm right here in the center.
Sorry, we have a small board.
And everybody squeeze in really tight. There we go. Okay, I've got you all in there. Ready? One, two, three.
One more. Okay. And as we're all walking back to our seats, if you saw this team in action at those ILT meetings, you would be so impressed. Amazing collaboration. Okay, we're moving on to our next time certain. Presentation of Resolution Number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-eight, Mental Health Awareness Month. This is item eight point three and the agenda. And today, we are putting, sending it to Francine Rodd. In recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month, the Monterey County Board is honored to present its adopted resolution to Francine Rodd, Executive Director of First Five Monterey County, in celebration of her leadership and the organization's longstanding commitment to early childhood mental health. Under Francine's leadership, First Five Monterey County has provided the Infant-Family Early Childhood Mental Health Training Series for more than fourteen years, equipping hundreds of early educators, care providers, and family support professionals with the knowledge and skills necessary to nurture the mental awareness of our youngest children throughout Monterey County. Training sessions are interactive with instructors connecting information with culture, personal strengths, and everyday experience of participants. The training is offered free of charge and is empowering those who search children through age five to support healthy development and strong family relationships. Research information confirms that mental health and wellness is critical to the growth of young children, and this training series is important for everyone whose work involves the lives of young children and families. Francine's deep belief in early investment and lasting change has brought hope and opportunity to countless children and families. Her leadership continues to inspire us all. We are proud to honor her today with this resolution and thank her for the difference she makes every day in Monterey County.
Congratulations. We have Francine and her team, her board, and team members here today, and we are so very blessed. This team, they work countless hours. They answer emails any time of the night, on weekends, to make sure that our students and families are served, and that all of the partner agencies in our county work very collaboratively together. So Francine, we're really thankful for your leadership and the leadership of your team. Now, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Well, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here, and as you said, we don't do this alone. And so I would like the team to stand up when I call them, and then we have our commissioners here. The first one is actually Dr. Ralph Porres, Gomez Porres. Appreciate all of your support. He's new. Karen was on our commission, and we miss her dearly, and we're glad to have Dr. Porres. We also have Commissioner Verlinda Diaz, who's here. She, stand up. And she's a former manager from Behavioral Health, and we're so excited to have her with us, as well as Monica Law, President and CEO of the Monterey Chamber. So those are our commissioners who are here with us. And then we're so pleased to have some of the folks who participated in the Infant-Family Early Childhood Mental Health Training Series with us. Josie Yipes, who's a parent, is teacher, is educator, who is also an instructional assistant now, who started out in the program, is now an instructional assistant. And Lilia Wanless, who also started out in the program from the very beginning in twenty-eleven, and is now one of the instructors. And you'll hear a bit more about her in a second. We also have with us Ramona McCabe, who's our Director of Programs, and Nina Alcaraz, who's our Director of Policy Advocacy and Communications. Nina is gonna share with you a very, very short story that tells more about the program than we ever could, just so that you have a little bit more of a sense of what happens in the Mental Health Training Series. Thank you.
Oh, me already? Okay. Didn't know I was up so quickly. Hi, good mornings. I'm glad to be here. So I brought a video, really, that shares, I think, more about the impact of what the Mental Health Training Services does with families in our community. And the families actually worked with Lilia Wanless, who stood up earlier, who's a parent, is teacher, is educator from door to hope, and she participated in the Mental Health Training since inception and is now an instructor. So and then I'll speak a little bit about the Mental Health Training Series and the impact it has in the community. While that's coming up, I can talk a little bit about how, oh, no, great, it's up.
Así que da mucha, mucha presión para mí en ese momento, pero no, no sabía expresarlo simplemente. Pues trataba de arreglarme para que según yo mis niños no notaran mi depresión. Gracias a los primeros cinco, gracias a Lilia. Ella fue la que me enseñó a explicarles a mis hijos qué es lo que se tienen que fijar, tanto a los niños como entre los adultos, a expresar. Mucho ha cambiado mi familia en el sentido de que es un cambio grandísimo cuando aceptas que estás deprimida. Mucho, mucho ha cambiado esta relación con mis niños. Yo los veo más felices y ahorita sí les da nervios, pero me fijo que ya interactuar más. Sí, me gustaría compartir y darle las gracias por su gran trabajo. Porque sin ustedes no podríamos. Muchas mamás sobre salir con nuestros hijos.
Y llegaba yo siempre, pues acá el texto del trabajo, que llegaba cansado, pero gracias a Lilia nos enseñó de que uno uno tiene que enseñarse a ser papá y dividir las cosas de trabajo a la familia. Y estoy aprendiendo eso. No estoy diciendo que ya soy el mejor, pero bueno, como que nos dio, nos enseñó ese camino de seguir para llegar a ser un mejor papá, y estoy tratando. Pues yo, yo venía de una familia violenta. Este, mi papá era muy violento. Era, era el público. Eso me, me, cuando eso me viene a la mente, lo que yo he vivido en la violencia. Y este, siempre me prometí yo no ser como mi papá. Y como papá, obviamente sí, durante yo también, este, como mis niños les gritaba o o no, no me sentaba a escuchar lo que ellos me decían. Pero aprendí mucho. No digo que soy el mejor papá, pero estoy aprendiendo a ser papá para ellos. Por eso mismo, en este programa, los primeros cinco, al principio no entendía qué era. Pero ya mirando los cambios y me ha enseñado, trato de ser, de dar un tiempo cuando mis hijos llegan con un premio, con una diploma, y así siempre trato de, de de darles las gracias o de decirles que estoy orgulloso de ello. Cuando llegaba como a la casa, notaba el cambio en mis hijos. Y a veces de forma mal, le decía a mi esposa, eh, ¿serán mis hijos o son otros niños? Porque yo miraba como, ah, el cambio drástico, se podría decir, entre ellos. Pues los cambios que que mi familia es mucho, porque ahora tenemos como más comunicación. Y a veces le decía, eh, ven tu papá también, tú ven a jugar. Y recuerdo que no era el estar, yo me sentaba ahí en el grupo y sentábamos a jugar entre todos. Y gracias a todos ustedes, a las personas que hacen posible este programa. Pienso que habíamos familias que estamos muy cerrados a a decir lo que hemos vivido o lo que, o lo que hemos pasado. Más que nada, como yo, cuando yo llegué a este país, nunca pensé que íbamos a llegar como a estar en esta silla o explicando a otra gente, a otra cultura como diferente de la donde yo vengo. Y este, pero yo sé que siempre tenía en mente de lograr algo. Creo que lo estoy haciendo, lo estamos haciendo mi familia y yo. Y por el simple hecho de estar aquí, yo me siento orgulloso de mí mismo, de mi familia. Y muchas gracias que, ojalá que nunca se acabe este programa.
Thank you. I think that Cecilia and Constantino's story is just one of the many stories of families here that we have in Monterey County that I think are mirrored, and we're glad to lift their voices and bring them into this space. Lilia worked with the family for three years, and one of the things that we didn't show in the video, that they were okay with us sharing, but we'll share privately, share in this space or verbally, is that Cecilia suffered from postpartum depression and was suicidal for a bit. And so, you know, she says that Lilia is one of the poor people in her life that helped her work through this period, and they both write to her in that way. So Lilia, you know, is not just an instructor, but she's an award-winning. Most recently, her and Josie won the CAPC, the Child Abuse Prevention Council's award this year. And Lilia has actually been recognized as Parents, Teachers, National Educators a couple of years ago. So we have a lot of talent here in Monterey County that because of a lot of the work that they, the trainings they've experienced with the Infant-Family Early Childhood Mental Health Training Series are able to share that and work with families to do their goals. So I think this video is a great example of what happens when our community providers are held to support family through times. I think that we're honored to stand up here today and share the impact of the mental health in our community and the trainings. And although it's, you know, May's Mental Health Awareness Month, we think of mental health awareness as every month. So we do have a couple of events that are happening here during May that we have flyers for. Thank you. And we're just very grateful and hope that everybody can, you know, take care of themselves physically and mentally and help share that with the community. So thank you.
So I'm gonna read a little bit of the resolution. It's Resolution Number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-eight, Recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas the Monterey County Board of Education recognizes May as Mental Health Awareness Month to highlight the importance of mental health and its impact on student well-being and academic success, and supports the two thousand twenty-five theme, Turn Awareness Into Action, which calls on individuals and communities to go beyond awareness and take concrete steps to improve mental health, mental well-being. And whereas rapid technological changes, excessive screen time, financial stress on families, and pressures of society have heightened anxiety, stress, and isolation among youth, fueling a mental health crisis characterized by rising rates of anxiety, depression, and behavioral challenges. And whereas mental health is an essential component of a child's overall well-being, influencing their ability to think, feel, and act, and early identification and access to services can lead to positive lifelong outcomes for children and family. And it goes on a bit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Monterey County Board of Education adopts Resolution Number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-eight, Recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and committing to turning awareness into action by advocating for mental health resources, supporting policies that expand access to care, and fostering a culture of mental wellness in Monterey County, schools, and communities. Congratulations, and thank you for all your work. Thank you so much. Everybody has to get super tight. We're gonna count that to you. Do we want to ask it this way?
That looks good. That looks good. We'll just slip Ralph in there. I got you all. Okay, big smiles. Ready, one, two, three? Okay.
I'm sorry, everybody needs to use my cell phone. The first time everybody's been in photos.
Get a little closer here with your phone.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah.
Wait, did he was close now? Okay. And we don't have Dylan. Okay, keep going.
We're gonna skip. So okay, so you want us to go to point three? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move to Oasis Charter School update, page fifty-five. And your agenda, Dr. Porres.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, we're gonna go ahead and bring this over to our charter director. Michelle, I'm Chuleta. I will introduce the item and get ourselves ready to roll.
Thank you, Dr. Porres. This is a request from you, the board, to get an update from Oasis Charter School regarding the status on their projected enrollment for the coming school year for financial projections, staff projections, special education services, cost and compliance, curriculum, and status on their governance board. And so this morning, we have the Executive Director of Oasis, Lauren Ricker, and she is going to share her update in all of these areas. So welcome, Lauren.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks for coming. I know that we, last time I was here, I shared some pretty dismal news with you. And going forward, I wanted to share with you realistically what our plan is. And I was asked to give you, I was asked to give you an update briefly. I was able to send it over to Michelle very quickly, and it wasn't pretty, but it was the fact. So I give you the pretty version now. Since that time in February, we had our parent meeting. We asked, I gave them the same presentation as I gave you. I told them exactly where we were at, and well, and I needed a commitment from them. I needed a commitment that night, are you in or you not? Knowing what the plan was, knowing that fiscally we may make it through this May and next May if everything stayed the same. And we had a hundred and fifty families reply that they're in. Okay, okay, now I Okay, okay, now I it's not whites of eyes or bottoms and seats, but it was a commitment that night. Um, and then we so we took their intent to re-enroll and we logged those. Um, and then during our open house, we also had our LCAP goal meeting that night and our through a D-LAC meeting as well. So we had our D-LAC meeting that night, explain the situation in Spanish. And we also, in that meeting, we also talked about the LPAC, um, which is the English language proficiency exam that we give to students who are English learners every year. And um, and then we opened up the table for families to talk about our three LCAP goals. Um, we had a pretty good turnout. We had lots of people with their posters and their stickies with great ideas. We pushed it out on parent squares as well, as well, so families could really start to think about if we're just one more year, what is it going to look like? Um, and again, I have to be the realist. Also, I need to be the face of stability. And so, like I said, if anything, I'm transparent. Um, our families had lots of good questions. Um, what if we were re-chartered? Would we become a K eight? And I think about our space and I just cringe at the idea of trying to stuff two more gray levels in this teeny tiny strip mall school. Um, but again, families have really good, um, really good ideas about what they want for an education for their students and for their children. Um, so we came up with a game plan. I've been working with my board of directors, um, who comes from a nonprofit profit history, but not necessarily a school history. Um, her grandson was my student last year. Um, and so she comes in with what can we do? How can we do this? Who can we get on board? Um, and I tell her that her enthusiasm is fantastic. I love it. But we also need to pump the brakes a little bit because we are talking about students' lives. Um, it's not just we come padlock the doors and move on. We really need to take into account what families need for their children, what options are available in the community as well as how our students are responding to our teaching. So this sixty day plan, excuse me, we put it together with where we were, what we are at now and where we plan on being. Um, some of the highlights that we have are our fiscal responsibility to you and to our families. Um, in the last time that we met, I have had nineteen IEP meetings with families. Um, we have reduced our need for registered behavior texts with our students from eleven down to two, possibly three. Um, and two of them are with our profound needs, students who have autism there. Uh, they now instead of saying Asperger's or other terms using they use a level one, meaning the least amount of support needed, level two, a moderate amount, and three, which is the most profound support that students are needing. We have two little guys who are level three. Um, one will need to keep his registered behavior tech because he tends to elope. And he was mine also last year. So when we had the IEP meeting, you know, we were talking about how we're going to support this child and try and back off services for them. And dad was very concerned. He's like, if my child runs in the street, are you gonna go get him? We're like, oh, my gosh, absolutely. Of course, of course we would. You know, we were talking about how we're non, you know, we were a non restraint. We don't practice restraint. We redirect. We um, we redirect and distract and all these things. I I assured him that if his son was running in the street, I would definitely go and grab him and bring him to the side of the road. So um, so as we're trying to go from the a more a a lesser restrictive situation. And we do ensure families that we are going to support their children through this transition of giving up the registered behavior text. And that's a savings of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, as I shared before, it's about six hundred eighty two thousand dollars a year for these uh behavioral supports for getting through um positive behavioral support. Uh, PBS group called PBS. Um, we're also uh got quotes from other agencies like Too Cheek to find out if they would be a more reasonable option for us. Um, and we're still deciding as these last IEPs are finishing up this week. Um, we're still deciding which route we're going to take if we're going to stick stick with PBS or we're going to go the route of Too Cheek. Um, we went from six behavior texts in our fourth grade class right now down to possibly two, one registered behavior tech and maybe a para that we can hire on our own. Our students have done so well with their behavior that we feel like they're not at a risk for other students or staff anymore, which is fantastic. Um, more along the fiscal lines, um, we met with Susie Brusa, who is Taylor's right hand woman. Uh, I'm sorry, Bruce Taylor's right hand woman. Um, and we met with her about a partnership that would continue. Um, we hadn't met since uh Ms. Millar left in January. Um, but her and my team met yesterday, actually. Explained what we want, where we're headed, if we re-charter, what would that look like or write a new charter. Um, and, you know, she's no nonsense. Suzie was like, what do you need from me? And I was like, well, you know, and I was trying to be.
Good morning. Hello. Good morning. Lenore, I'm on the line.
Oh, Lenore, we're not yet to that item. Thank you for being on the line, but um.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. We're not starting.
To come in early. So do you want to just text me when you're ready?
Do you have her cell phone number? Yes, we'll text you when we're ready. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Sorry to interrupt. Okay, bye bye.
Sorry.
So, um, Suzie said, what do you need from me? And and we said, well, this is our budget. This is the situation that we're in. We know that um, previous leadership has been reckless with their finances and we're not that. We're not that. We are always going to side on the conservative side because I'd rather be pleasantly surprised than taken off guard and shocked. Nobody likes that when it comes to finances. So um, I had our budget set uh with our finance person for an enrollment of one seventy five next year and what that budget would look like. Um, Suzie Bruce was also uh pretty positive that Bruce Taylor would continue wanting to support us because his mission is getting kids to read. And my commitment is we are not under educating one more child one more day. So again, um, that felt like a very positive positive relationship going forward. So I'm excited about that. Um, another issue, so we had our sped issue, um, or our financials, um, enrollment, our sped situation. So we have currently thirty four students with IEPs. Um, and we are wrapping up those IEPs right now. I'm telling you, it has been, I had four IEPs yesterday, starting at seven thirty in the morning and then eight o'clock and then one eleven thirty and then one thirty. I was like, we're getting these done. We are going to be in compliance and by May twenty ninth, we absolutely will be in compliance. Um, most families have agreed to um that their child doesn't need the most restrictive environment, which is having an aide sitting over them. Um, very positive news there. Um, we also have been spending about, I had to say that I had a blank check for this because we have to do it. Um, about thirty thousand dollars on SAI, which is specialized academic instruction every month to get our students the help they needed for reading and math. That did not uh include speech, occupational therapy or psychological services. So that's just SAI. It's very expensive to hire an outside company to do this. Um, since then, we've convinced someone from the Santa Cruz area to come and be our full time sped person next year. Um, she was a little bit higher on the salary schedule, but not thirty thousand dollars worth. We were very excited about that. She's agreed to come in this summer, go through all of the IEPs, get everything in order, come up with a plan. Um, and we're very excited to um get her on board. She filled out her paperwork yesterday. Twenty five years experience as a mod to severe uh special ed education teacher. She has a certificate in autism from CSUMB and behavior is her jam. So we're like, what can we do for you to get us on board? So we're very excited to have her. And and so that will clean up our sped situation a little bit more, just having someone on site, being able to give those SAI services. Um, making sure that we're compliant in all of the areas that we need students to be supported in. Um, again, even if it's just one more year, we're not going to let any of these children fall through the cracks. Um, and last but not least, we have um our, see, we had our finances, we had our special ed, we had um, our LCAP goals. Oh, I'm adjusting. So we have decided to go with iReady curriculum for next year. Um, when we did our curriculum review at MCOE, we realized that we had some really beautiful, shiny, very tempting um curriculum options for ELA. Um, they were not in the budget. They were not in the budget. So we're gonna use iReady next year. Um, for reading, I when I spoke with the representative, she decided to give us iReady math for free until December. Yay, very exciting. Um, and what iReady does is it levels children, so they go in and they take a pre-exam, pre-test. Um, and then it gives them lessons that will move them through up to grade level. Um, we're getting our NWEA data back now. Um, students have been setting goals with their teachers, something they've never done before. Again, you don't learn to run a marathon without a watch. So we need to set a goal with these kids. And they've been doing it, meeting the goal. Um, they met their for, we had eighty percent of our kids meet their goal last time in winter and we had a bubble party, very exciting. We had five bubble machines out on the grass and music and I just had to remind them to keep their mouths closed so they didn't get bubbles in their mouth. It was as a kindergarten teacher, you have to remember, you have to teach this skill. We're not going up to the bubble machine with our mouth open. Um, and they had a lot of fun. So we're hoping for that same goal or that same growth going into spring. We still have two classes that need to NWEA. And then um some other uh supports that we're doing going into next year. We realized that we did not have a code of conduct. We realized we did not have behavior plans. We realized that we were just allowing this organic level of consequences roll out with our students and it was absolutely infuriating to families, to administration, being called on the walkie because um, a teacher couldn't handle a tier one level, which is something that's normally handled in the classroom. So we had a professional development in um April. Every, it was mandatory for everybody to intend recess, after school program, teachers, office staff, everyone went so they understood the MTSS process, what that looks like and what the expectation is for what's handled in the classroom, what gets elevated to level two and is and then again at level three. So we were able to train everybody in that. We had Gretchen Kelly come from MCOE and do a presentation. It was fantastic. Um, and then we've dug deep and we worked hard. Now we have a code of conduct going into next year. We are not playing around when it comes to behavior. And we understand what the um, what the special education laws are when students act outside of their disability or we are supporting their disability and they still choose to have violent behavior towards staff and students. We're no longer tolerating that, um, which means that our suspension rate on the dashboard is going to be pretty high. And I'm sorry that that's the case, but um, I am not playing around when it comes to the safety of students and staff in my in at Oasis. Um, and um, so our improvement recruitment and enrollment situation, um, we have now um, we have our students who have re-enrolled already with their packets. We're very um excited about that. We've opened it up to the community. We haven't even launched our campaign yet. But again, realistically, every family that comes in and does a tour, I'm letting them know we are in a region, we've, this is the, this is the way of re-chartering. This is how charter schools work. Um, we may only be available for one year. And if you are interested in having that for your student, I can tell you it's going to be one of the most fantastic years of your life. We're turning our sixth grade into a leadership academy. Um, we have, we were going to be losing five of our fifth graders because our sixth grade teacher is notoriously tough. We're setting very high standards and holding the kids to it and families weren't interested in that. But since then, our new instructional coordinator, who is the fifth grade whisperer, I will tell you, she is convinced four out of those five kids to re-enroll for next year. So our sixth grade, instead of sitting at fourteen, is now up to nineteen or no, I guess eighteen. Um, so our lowest enrollment was going to be in sixth grade. And that's a hard one to recruit for because families don't want their kid just one year. But again, if it is just one year, they're going to have an amazing leadership experience in sixth grade. So um, I am more than willing to take any questions that you have. For bonus.
Little comment, um, hold me, hold me to, hold me to what you told me at breakfast.
Absolutely.
Godspeed.
What would Joan say?
Godspeed, you know, you're you're doing everything that you can. All you can do is all you can do.
That's exactly where I'm at. I have a clear, I have a clear vision, but I also have a clear, I'm rooted in reality.
Thank you for that.
Any other?
I'd just like to commend you on your positive energy.
Thank you.
Your commitment and your love for education.
Oh, yes.
This school, Oasis, has been facing so many issues in the past. Nobody lasts that long in the administration. So I can see um some issues that are not being addressed in your complex, but I do feel that you are in the right set of mind to push this agenda and 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 make it happen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other?
I'll add my thanks and we know you're trying hard and it sounds like you're being very realistic, which is important as well. So thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. It's very hard. It's um, you know, it's something that um, I don't know what's driving me. I I I it's it's something from where, you know, I I think about my students and I see them growing on Facebook. I'm like, oh, my gosh, you have adult teeth. This is amazing. Like, you're an actual grown up, having children of your own. What is going on? Um, and I realize I've been doing this for a very long time and what it comes down to is making sure they have the best quality education that we can deliver. We had to make some hard staffing choices as well. I, as a first time administrator, I had to let two people go. Um, because their heart wasn't it anymore and I could tell. And those conversations are really hard to have. It's really hard. Um, the lawyer suggested that I say less and that's not me. I sat down with these people and we cried together and I said, I need you to go out and find your passion. Because or take some time off and find your spark again because there needs to be more of a drive than a steady paycheck and health insurance. There needs to be more for that for our students.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Um, so Dr. Stanley gave us a magic number, which was ten additional students. And I'm looking here at your sixty day goal. And so your your goal is enrolling a hundred and ninety five and that's that's our magic number.
So yes, we set the budget uh last year at one eighty two, which is what our enrollment, so we.
Okay. And so, okay, so then we need the one ninety five and currently we are at I was reading it in here and saw it's more, I didn't underline it though. Where are we at currently? As far as enrollment, how many is the package here?
Oh.
Um, Bridget, okay, do we have to, is it on this one?
Yeah, it's um, it's an ever changing number as we get more enrollment.
About where are we?
We are about.
I'm sorry, that I guess summarize my question. Where are we for next year at this point in time?
We have a hundred sixty two enrolled for next year, a hundred and sixty two enrolled. And we're trying to get to a hundred and ninety.
Right.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much and good luck.
Oh, thanks.
Stay from.
Okay, we're going to take a five minute bathroom break and then we're going to start our in our district. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute bathroom break, and then we're going to start our inter-district
Everyone, like, right.
She pulled down. She was overheating. She got really
Thank you. We're working on the inter-district attendance appeal hearing.
Going to read, uh, board agenda number six point four and appeal number twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, two. Uh, powers of the county board. This is a hearing by the Monterey County Board of Education on an appeal filed by or on behalf of student Christian Corboda of the decision of the Salinas City Elementary School District to deny an inter-district attendance agreement.
Sorry, am I reading the wrong thing? Yeah, that's
I'm sorry.
It's okay. You just made
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Introductions, and Dr. Gus.
Um, yes, so we have with us, uh, this afternoon, the parents, um, right, people, sorry, it's kind of loud. Right here to the right, and would you please stand up and introduce yourselves?
Hello, I'm Christian's father, Nathan.
And I'm his father Denise.
And I am his grandmother.
And I'm grandpa.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And then on behalf of the district, we have not wait, but it's down here on this table. Thank you. And, um, for the parents and for the district, let me also please introduce, um, the staff members present for this meeting and our county board members. So we have with us today, Dr. Ralph Juarez, our deputy superintendent, Dr. Colleen Stanley, our chief business official, Cindy Dunn, our executive assistant. I'm Dr. Gus, county superintendent of schools. Um, also, our staff members, Dr. Lee Butler, chief human resources officer, sorry, I almost just called you a doctor there. She does not want to go back to school. Dr. Ernesto Bella, our assistant superintendent of student services. And then our county board members, county board president, Heather Owen, trustee, our vice chair, Annette Yest. We have John McPherson, uh, we have Jaime Fernandez, we have Mary Claypool, and we have Sandra Ocampo. And on the line, we have Virginia H. Mendoza, our county board leaders.
Thank you for being here today.
This one is not moving session because it was not requested.
Okay. So I want to remind, also want to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and broadcast.
Yes, it, it will be on YouTube.
So, we just, we, so this, okay. So that's when I read the appeal now? Okay, we're dispensing with a reading of the letter of appeal unless one or more parties request the letter be, of appeal be read.
And the reason we're asking to dispense of the reading of the appeal is because all of the county board members received this packet seventy-two hours ago and have already had the opportunity to read that letter. And our understanding is the parents wrote the letter and that the district has already seen the appeal as well.
Okay. State the powers of the county board and inter-district attendance appeal hearings, Dr. Gus.
All right, so the powers of the county board in this hearing. This is a hearing by the Monterey County Board of Education on an appeal filed by or on behalf of student Christian Cordova of the decision of the Salinas City Elementary School District to deny an inter-district transfer um, attendance agreement for the student to attend Graves Elementary School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The student's parent resides within the boundaries of the Salinas City Elementary School District. A summary of the case has been prepared by the County Office of Education and has been distributed to the County Board of Education. Section four, six, six, oh, one of the California Education Code authorizes the Monterey County Board of Education to make a decision on this appeal. The county board may also send the matter back to the district that denied the inter-district attendance request if there is significant new evidence introduced during the appeal hearing. The county board policy five-one-one, seven-point-one on inter-district attendance appeals directs the members to review the basis of the district's denial to determine whether there are unusual conditions that justify intervention by the county board. Also, granting the appeal must result in improving the educational and/or health interests of the student to such a critical degree that substantial positive results in educational services to the student will result.
Thank you, Dr. Gus. I'm going to explain the procedures for the hearing, and then we'll commence with the hearing. So, A, the appellant may state reason or reasons for the county board to overturn the denial of the inter-district transfer. Please direct your comments to the board. Um, B, the district may state reason or reasons for the county board to uphold the district's decision to deny the inter-district transfer. C, the appellant may succinctly state any final rebuttal. D, the district may succinctly state any final rebuttal. B, questions from the board? Please direct your comments to the board. And then, after the hearing is closed, the board excuses both parties.
Oh, in this case, since this is being done in open session?
Okay. Oh, it is a pleasure of the board. Okay, so the, so we're not closing the hearing. So then the board will deliberate. Then the board will re-invite, well, we're not closing, okay?
So we're going back.
The board, yeah.
So the appellant may state the reasons for the county board to overturn the denial of the inter-district transfer. So, um, the appellant, will you please come to the microphone and say your reasons?
Good morning, members of the board. Uh, like I said earlier, I'm Nathan, Christian's father. There are various reasons why attending Graves Elementary School would be beneficial for both Christian and her family as a whole. Christian's mother and my fiancee Denise Sanchez plan on seeking employment on a part-time basis once Christian attends full. I work in the public safety sector and work twelve-hour shifts, uh, which can vary from all-day shifts to overnight shifts. Uh, most, if not all, the elementary schools near our residence require their kindergarten students to attend a six-hour school day. In order to allow our family to have the flexibility to plan and schedule childcare and transportation for Christian to accommodate our work schedule, a four-hour kindergarten school day would better suit us, which Graves offers. Furthermore, Christian's grandmother Patty Sanchez also has a son who currently attends Graves Elementary School. Patty would also be able to, uh, to assist our family and the transportation and care of Christian while both his parents are at work. We value Christian's future education, and it is our strong belief as a tenant set the Graves Elementary School District through an inter-district transfer would be more beneficial for our family. And thank you for your time.
I have a letter here from Ms. Ross, who is the superintendent and principal of Graves Elementary. So it says, dear members of the County Board of Education, I respectfully submit this request on behalf of the Cordova family seeking an inter-district transfer for their kindergarten student to attend Graves Elementary School. This request is not made lightly. It is rooted in the family's deep desire to do what is best for their child while also supporting the fabric of our community. The family has carefully considered their child's developmental needs and has expressed sincere concerns about the extended date that would result from being enrolled in an after-school program within their home district. A full day of instruction followed by after-school care is simply too long for their young child, especially at such a formative stage in their educational journey. Instead, the family has arranged for the child's grandmother, who already provides care for another relative, to pick up the student and care for them after school. This arrangement is not only practical, but offers the child the comfort and consistency of familial care in a nurturing home environment. Graves Elementary is a small, close-knit school that pride, prides itself on partnering with families and putting students first. We view education as a collaborative effort between school and home and are committed to meeting this diverse needs, the diverse needs of all children entrusted to our care. In this case, welcoming the student to our community would not only support the child's emotional and academic well-being, but also strengthen our district's broader mission of serving families with compassion, flexibility, and integrity. Importantly, the home district is not at risk of exceeding its inter-district transfer threshold and therefore does not face negative fiscal or enrollment implications from approving this transfer. Denying this request would likely result in the family withdrawing their child from the pub, public education system to homeschool, thus limiting the child's access to peer interaction, extracurricular enrichment, and the support structures available in a public school setting. At Graves, we believe that decisions must be made in the best interest of children's and family. Approving this transfer request aligns with our collective responsibility as educator, educators and community leaders to do what is right, not just administratively, but ethically and humanely. I urge the County Board of Education to approve this inter-district transfer so that this student can access a supportive, developmentally appropriate learning environment and remain connected to their family and community. Thank you for your consideration and continued commitment to putting children first. Sincerely, Michelle Ross. And that's pretty much, it, she pretty much summed everything up that I wanted to say, so I, I don't really have anything to add to her letter.
Thank you very much. You see it? We will ask that the district come up.
Good morning, members of the Monterey County Board of Education. Um, members, I press and further reading today. I have a copy of the summary of my points that I'll be sharing with you today. So just like, you know, it's, it's a very, yeah, but I forget. So that's perfect. The transfer out of the district must be granted handed only under two defined criteria, such as if the student is the child of an active duty in military, parent, or a documented victim of bullying. In this case, the request does not meet any of these qualifying conditions. As such, the district is not obligated or authorized to approve the transfer. We also reviewed the educational setting at the requested school. Based on the school accountability report, right, we found that there was a decline in performance for students on the state assessments in the way and the tuition charges. And that during twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. In addition, for a kindergarten student like Christian, these trends obviously are concerning, and the requested school, uh, Graves utilizes multi-grade classrooms. So these structures can be useful in some contexts. They raise concerns about whether a kindergartner, uh, will receive the best focus, the mentally appropriate instruction they need during such a foundational learning stage. It's also important to note that the message of this school district offers district-wide no-cost extended learning programs. These include academic support, enrichment opportunities, and safe after-school care, resources that can help meet many of the same needs shared in this appeal. Finally, we understand that school placement decisions are deeply personal and impactful for families. However, the district's role is to apply policy and law consistently and fairly. Based on the facts on this case, this case, the request does not meet the education code's criteria, and there are valid concerns about the academic setting at the requested school. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the Monterey County Board of Education to uphold the district's denial of the inter-district transfer request. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. Hey, you have, you have a chance to review the
One of the things I think that was brought up, um, from the Salinas City District was that, uh, some of the classrooms are shared with, uh, different grades. I would also argue that, you know, historically, the class sizes are a lot smaller than the ones you get here in the city of Salinas. So I, I would argue that, you know, Based on the school accountability report, right, we found that there was a decline in performance for students on the state assessments in the way and the tuition charges and that during twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. In addition, for a kindergarten student like Christian, these trends obviously are concerning and the requested school, uh, Graves utilizes multi-grade classrooms. So these structures can be useful in some contexts. They raise concerns about whether a kindergartner, will receive the best focus, the mentally appropriate instruction they need during such a foundational learning stage. It's also important to note that the message of this school district offers district-wide no-cost extended learning programs. These include academic support, enrichment opportunities, and safe after-school care resources that can help meet many of the same needs shared in this appeal. Finally, we understand that school placement decisions are deeply personal and impactful for families. However, the district's role is to apply policy and law consistently and fairly. Based on the facts on this case, this case, the request does not meet the education code's criteria and there are valid concerns about the academic setting of the requested school. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the Monterey County Board of Education to uphold the district's denial of the interdistrict transfer request. Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you so much.
Okay. Hey, you have, you have a chance to review the.
Um, one of the things I think that was brought up from the Salinas City District was that, uh, some of the classrooms are shared with, uh, different grades. I would also argue that, you know, historically, the class sizes are a lot smaller than the ones you get here in the city of Salinas. Um, so I, I would argue that, you know, per teacher, uh, there is, uh, a small number of, uh, students, um, per teacher, so I believe there is adequate supervision for the kids even whether or not they are an element or kindergarten age or, you know, uh, upper grades. So. That would be my counter to that.
So we have children in that class.
Twelve? He, yes, um, historically, there has only, it's only been about forty students within the whole school, um, of Graves Elementary. Um, and I mean, if I think it would be beneficial for Christian. Um, I am his mother, so I know him best. And I think if, if we are not able to get him into Graves Elementary, I will be homeschooling him, which I would not like to do just because of, uh, lack of social interaction. Um, he was born during the pandemic, so, uh, it, it did affect, you know, social interaction. We couldn't have play groups. And yeah, that's, I, I would be homeschooling him if, if it is, uh, if the denial was upheld.
Thank you. One more, thank you.
Just wanted to, um, and add that our class sizes and our kinder, uh, do you know that the TK will be maximum twenty next year with the ratio ten to one? In kinder, we strive to not have more than twenty-four. The class level ratio will be twelve to ones where required to have permission for every, uh, adoration. So just wanted to add.
There any questions from the board?
For the, the district. So you s- just so we're clear, the district has a board policy regarding interdistrict transfers. And that this, your denial is in compliance with board policy. You kind of make it seem in the letter that it's basically, you're kind of kicking it up to the ed code, and I think we can agree, the ed code allows the local district leeway, but you have a board policy. So my suggestion would be in the future in these communications, to make it very clear to the parents that it is the local board policy that you are following. And not, not the, oh, our hands are tied because the ed code says we can't do anything else. Um, my question, uh, how many, uh, outgoing interdistrict transfers has the, uh, district approved in the last year?
We receive, uh, uh, an estimated, uh, interdistrict requests out of the district. Um, we've named it four hundred, uh-huh, across the county, majority going to, the closer school districts, Salina, Alas, Spreckles, Washington, uh-huh, and, um, but those, um, at this point, uh, we, uh, we, uh, approve for twenty-five, twenty-six, about two-thirds of those, because we are looking at the, at the great period that implies with those must, uh, must be approved, right? So, the, uh, approval process has been adjusted to comply with those categories that are less approved.
Okay, so you, you, there are interdistrict transfers that you have approved, but you, uh, you're telling the board that those interdistrict transfers, uh, you needed, you were in essence required to approve those based upon your internal policy.
And they are, we are in the process of, uh, needing to send other approvals in the items.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. After looking at the, um, and the format where you requested it, why you wanted it, um, your son to, to attend a different school? I got the picture that it's not totally because you have cousins or uncles, um, attending the Graves Elementary School. Is mainly, oh, this is what I'm getting from what I read from here. Is mainly what you're dealing with, actually, is with childcare considerations. Because if it's not your mom who will help you, with your child, who will be then? From what I read here is that she will be part of this, right? Picking up your son and the rest of your siblings. So actually, you will be able to move along in your life without being forced to be homeschooling or leaving the kid in, in Salinas City District. So what I'm hearing here is not totally that they just want a petition to, to say, you know, I want my kid to attend because it's a smaller school and I have seen family, uh, attending that school. From what I read, it is documented, it was provided to us from the Monterey County Board of Education, is that the criteria for consideration of interdistrict attendance appeals, and I read through the whole list of items, and I come out with childcare consideration. So that's what you're looking for. But when you fill, when you fill the document here, which is this one, okay? I read through it, and item from one to five, you just put, no, let me see. Yes, a specific reason for request. You just fill that part of other explanation required. And then you put uncles and cousins attending the same school. To me, to me, is not totally correct. When you do that, it would be care provider. Okay? Specifically. Not this. And so, like I said, after I read your, your information and, 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 and the boxes were not totally, uh, checked, because here's one that it says childcare. And they shouldn't be the one. For me, if I was you, I would check this box, childcare. Because that's us at all. Your mom will take care of your baby. You need your mom to help you taking and picking up your son from school. Am I right?
Well, it's both. He has.
Well, yeah, but.
Family.
Yeah, yeah, but maybe the issue is not because you're interested in, 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 in taking and leaving the kid in the other school, because it'll be more work. You know? Pick up siblings and then go to here. Your mom will pick up the baby from Salinas District. So to me, it's like, more like a daycare provider concern that you're dealing with. I mean, it's, it's, it's for some.
It's a multiple.
And under the county, you know, it says right here that, um, the childcare considerations will allow you, you know, to be stronger in your application for this interrequest. Now, talking about the schools, you know, comparing Salinas City School District to Graves Schools, it's not comparable at all. At all. Because Salinas City District has many schools on board. Graves is just one single school with a very low enrollment. So when you compare the education, of course, it's not going to be there. You know? But is something that you as a mom and dad have the right to appeal and request that interchange? And then, like, like, um, trustee, my, uh, my first and mention to you, the word policies are different between the district and the county, but, um, I will see, I will see that you, that you need to, um, in other words, I understand where you're coming from. So, um, I would like to make a motion. May I?
We're not there, no, not there.
Okay, anybody?
Are there any other questions from board members?
Well, I had a question since, uh, for the district again. Um, since you put it in your letter about the, um, test scores, I'm just curious what, what your levels are. Um, not that, they are not stating that as a criteria, but I think it would be helpful to just know that.
Yes, the performance, the average performance that made or defeated district lines. No, it's about twenty-five percent.
It's up twenty-five percent.
No, 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 it's about twenty-five percent of students meeting.
Twenty-five percent.
Based on.
Format and E L A.
Okay, so actually, it's quite lo- a bit lower than Graves, okay? That's, that's good to know. I, I thought that might be helpful. Um, alright, thank you. I appreciate it.
Alright, any other questions from the board? Okay, so. Oh, sorry. Okay, so we're going to close the hearing and the board is going to deliberate. I want to remind everyone of the criteria for consideration of interdistrict attendance appeals. Um, it is on page five in your agenda. Do you need to read it all?
Yeah, you don't have to read it, but everyone has to just.
On page five.
Utilizing the criteria.
Criteria.
I know.
For the record, why don't you read it?
Okay, verification that all statutory and regulatory requirements have been satisfied. The needs of the concerned districts and their communities as a whole, and live space availab- availability and long and short-term fiscal impact. The basis for the board's actions which give rise to the appeal and determine whether there are unusual conditions which justify the rejection of the request. The district of residence does not offer the particular educational program required by the people, and the district of desired attendance offers such a program severe hardship in terms of time and/or cost to the person having custody or to the pupil, for before or after-school supervision of the pupil will result if the pupil is required to attend the district of residence. Childcare considerations. A substantial danger to the pupil's health or safety will be removed or greatly mitigated by granting the appeal. Such other conditions exist which will result in substantial and manifest improvement in educational services for the pupil if he attends the district as requested. Whether good cause otherwise exists and information deemed useful to the board as disclosed by the county superintendent's investigation. So are there any thoughts from the board members?
Well, you know, I, I keep starting saying this all the time, but doing this a while. Um, I want to commend, uh, Salinas City. Uh, you have a policy. It's a well-thought-out policy. You adhere to your policy. Um, there have been a lot of these, uh, uh, interdistrict transfers where with other districts, that that isn't the case. Um, so I'll commend the board for putting together a policy and for the numbers. You do allow inner districts that, um, apply with your policy. It's somewhat restrictive, which I understand because you need students to have ADA to fund your schools. So your policy is, is balanced and it's a solid policy. We have more leeway, uh, per ed code. Um, and it's just up to us what we want to do.
Any thought, other thoughts or comments? So when I looked at this, I made a couple of notes. One was, um, it sounded like that the parents were asking for a small school setting for their child. Um, and that was answered that there's twelve in the class, uh, for kindergarten at Graves. And the kinder class at Salinas, uh, Elementary is at twenty-four. So that does meet that parent's desire, um, there. My other question was, was grave, did graves have room to accept the child and willing to accept the child? And the letter that they brought, um, does note that Graves would be willing to accept this transfer. And those were my two questions that were actually answered in the hearing and things that I would be considering, um, as a parent. Um, I think choice of where your child goes to school is very, very important. And the parents came forward to us with several reasons about why they chose where they would like their child to go. And I think we hit a couple on, um, the considerations. One is childcare considerations. Um, I think that having a child at home with a grandparent and other um, family members is more valuable than having a child in extended care till six P M. at night. Especially that, yeah, especially at that young age. And that would be a choice that I would personally make for my own child. Um, and then, um, I like this one down here that says whether good cause otherwise exists. And I think parent choice is a very good call for choosing where your child goes to school. So those are my arguments. Um, Hi-Mae, I see your hand, your hand.
Um, I looked at both of those things, also childcare considerations, and I don't think anybody can argue that spending time with a grandparent is going to hurt. Um, but I also look at good cause otherwise exists, and I'm trying to figure out what is good cause. Because I imagine that that would be different problems, right?
It's very subjective.
Exactly. Um, but I look at also the mother being able to work and family-wise, I think that's always a good thing. I think in today's world, we need two incomes to be successful in many cases. And I don't know what the father told, like, you being working, but I didn't clearly understand what you said and what you do. But I would agree that childcare considerations absolutely, um, should be taken into account. And, um, good causes, I believe, does exist. And I, I'm I'll go with that.
Mary?
These cases are always quite difficult, for me anyway, because there's always a personal side, and then there's a policy side. And I think unfortunately for the districts, our board gets a lot of leeway to override their decisions based on what you just said. And we have a litany of reasons why we can overturn their decision. And, uh, I guess I'm kind of glad I'm not on a district board because you're constantly being overruled. And I agree with some of what's been said. Of course, you want to consider childcare and, you know, the quality of the child. But it's always difficult for me to balance the two, the policy versus the personal. And I've been in this situation because my grandchildren were all on interdistrict transfers, and it was always really anxious as to whether or not you're going to get approved. And if you didn't, you know, there was consequence to pay, and it was usually the child that paid that consequence. So I find it very difficult to make these decisions, but unfortunately, we're in that position.
Um, Virginia, do you have any comments?
No, I'm not.
Any other comments? Okay, I need a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair. My motion will read here by move that student twenty-four, twenty-five dash O two shall be allowed to attend the Graves Elementary School District for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six this school year.
Second.
Um, I had a motion and a second. Can I take a vocal vote?
Heather Owen?
I approve.
Excuse me, couldn't hear the motion. Can you repeat it? I couldn't hear the motion.
The motion is to allow the transfer.
Allow the student to go to Graves.
Okay, thank you.
I approve.
Annette Yestick, yes. John McPherson.
I.
Virginia Mendoza.
Yeah.
Hi-Mae Fernandez.
Yes.
Mary Claypool.
I.
Sandra Ocampo.
I just hate it.
Great, motion passes. The student will be allowed to attend Graves Elementary School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Congratulations.
We like you both, have you?
The parents can.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to item eight-point-five Monterey Bay Charter School Annual Report. Annual Report Report, page fifty-nine in your agenda.
Yes, so we have our, a report coming up and I.
Yes, so we have our, a report coming up and I believe that Director Archuleta, or I should check right now. Usually she does an introduction, but I thought your boys are ready to go, so.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna introduce uh, Executive Director Jessica Gussi, who is here for the annual, uh, board update. And so, uh, this is not an update as Oasis, this is her annual report to you.
Monterey Bay.
Monterey Bay Charter.
What name, who did I say?
Oasis.
No. What she mentioned was, it's not so O eight for clarification.
Thank you.
Oasis is coming very frequently to give updates to our board um, because of some concerns that were shared in the prior meeting. This is a normal annual report that every charter school that this county board authorizes gives each year.
Dr. Gus, that's exactly what I meant to say. Thank you.
Is our microphone working? We're good? Okay, so. Uh, so my name is Shox Tech Gussi, Executive Director of Monterey Bay Charter School, joined by my colleague.
Candace Miller, Communications and Development Manager of Monterey Bay Charter School.
Okay, so we hope you received our report. Um, so we'll go over the slides and I'll just draw your attention to a couple of points in the report as it goes through. Uh, on the page. I wanted to talk about our demographics because there's lots of them on slides. So on page sixty-four. Um, by the way, my Bay Charter School is having a great year. Uh, we're very happily renewed by this fabulous board. So we want to thank you again for our renewal and our M O U. And we just forward to five more years of, um, our charter in the county.
Outside of the city there, it's well that we remain family direct charter school by those who read Monterey Parent Magazine for this year in a row.
Okay, congratulations. All right, so, uh, I'm gonna start with demographics, which starts on page sixty-four in your packet. And I put, um, I put a comparison chart, the current, um, is, is on the chart there, but then below, uh, we're still seeing steady growth and a reduction of, uh, white students from fifty-five to fifty-three percent. And then an increase in S U F students taking up that two percent. So that's our, our change there. Steady growth is what we're looking for and we're seeing that. And then other populations that grew dramatically this year. Uh, page sixty-eight, our students with disabilities population over time. So in the last two years, we've gained thirty students with existing I E Ps or identified by our school. Um, so that's, that's a pretty big increase in the last two years. Still seeing that going up. And then last one, just to draw your attention to page seventy, start, uh, low-income students. That grew dramatically this year, up fifty students from last year. So we're seeing, you know, responding to those changes in our population and needs of our students. And is there any more questions about anything in the report or moved to five? Other questions? Um. Do you want them now? I had on page sixty-seven. And I, it says that you are still doing, um, speech services virtually. And I just wondering what steps you're taking to get those speech services. I know, Heather, you asked me that last time and I was so happy to tell you, we had a hundred percent in-person services, but, um, C S U M V was serving our, our students and they have, I think we have too many students for them. They were not able to continue second semester. Um, so we have a new company and they're actually wonderful. I was really like, ah, going back to, you know, virtual speech services that they've done. So we continue to post for a speech therapy job. Our caseload's getting a little high for just one person. Um, so for now, our family and students are fairly happy with the virtual services. At their, called Speech to Go-To Speech, Go-To Speech Ther- a national company. Um, they're very professional in our I E P meeting and I, I kind of like how they have a structure. They have a case manager and then service provider. Um, so because of that, we're, the students are kind of getting more than if we just had our one speech therapist trying to kind of hold down all the meetings and do all this. I know it's not your favorite, it's not mine either. I, I just worry, I have seen it in person and I've experienced it in person and those tech, those click, those, you don't hear everything, you don't see everything, you don't. And speech is really about hearing and seeing. And when you're trying to do it on a screen, it's just so very hard. So my hope is as the C S U students graduate with their degrees, that they'll want to come work with us. Working for that. Um, but yeah, that's our only service that's not in person right now, so. Okay, Mary?
Yeah, can I just piggyback on that? Because I understand why you're so focused on in-person. But how many more students can you serve if you do it virtually? So that the advantage is that you serve more students versus a few. And I realize in-person is better, obviously. I like in-person meetings better than I do the Zoom meetings. But you can serve more students and the benefit seems to be broader. Is that true or not?
Uh, yeah, that's true. And I mean, if I had to hire, you know, like a one point five F T E of speech, which is probably where we're at. Um, you, you get more, like the companies because they serve more schools, but the cost is a little bit lower for schools as well. So you're right, because they're, they kind of have a more corporate structure with the case manager speaks to the therapist and then present, they, they also do the assessments and then they present at the I E P meetings and then they have service providers. Which I think three are currently assigned to our school.
So has there been any data on, uh, those that are served virtually versus those that are served in person? That the outcome is different?
Uh, how many students? Probably about sixty that have speech either included in their I E P or speech only for a lot of K-one students might have.
I mean, the students that are served in person, do they get a better outcome because it's in person versus those that have been done virtually? Do they get a lesser?
I don't know.
I mean, that would be kind of interesting to know because the lot, the more students, the better. But if the service isn't as good, then I guess you.
I know. Well, we only, we only have C S U M V for a spring semester and a fall semester. So I don't know that I have data to answer your question, but it is a good question.
I'd just like to see as many students as possible serve.
All right. So. I can work this into you, trust me.
You.
All right, so our mission and vision, uh, remain the same. We improved our charter. Looking towards imaginative, compassionate, and creative leaders. Our achievement in E L A and math, uh, still kind of seeing the same pattern of the lighter.
She might want to speak in because I doubt if you can hear more into.
Very close to the mic. Okay. Um, so we are doing very well. We've got twenty-four percent exceeded and thirty-nine percent in met. So still seeing kind of high numbers on, on the light gray category, the nearly met. We'd like to see them push up into met. So, um, they're doing pretty well overall in E L A at our school. And then in math, if we've got fifteen percent exceeding and twenty-one percent, um, needing higher number math, again, we dipped back into yellow. I think we talked about that earlier in the year. Um, changes we made this year, we're in our upper grades. We align seventh and eighth grade in math. Trying in our bell schedules so that they can have kind of a fast track and a regular track. Um, and the, the students have responded really well to that. They like it. They, um, and then we also, because we have just the two classes at each grade level. If we've seen, you know, students were able to kind of go between if they started on in one class and were a better fit for the others, the teachers kind of had that flexibility to shift them around. Um. So we're gonna see if that makes any difference this year. Students are testing now. And then we've got two big of a number in that light gray category, the thirty-five percent. So we're gonna shift our, uh, intervention model to starting out by serving those students and seeing if we can move them to the light blue color and then doubling back for our dark gray students next year. So we'll see if those make an impact and get us back into green. Um, so that's what we're working on there. And as you know, our school is very unique and we have an arts-integrated program. So students learn by doing and creating art about what they're doing. Uh, so here's some examples. You know, marking in their main lesson books, which is also something unique to our school in that students don't, aside from math, where we have our, your typical box curriculum, students have blank art books. And they integrate E L A and, um, different topics that they're learning through units of study. And our teachers do beautiful chalk cards. We've got some of our teacher artwork on the boards there. Yes, we have chalkboards and chalk. Um, project-based learning is a part of their units of studies. You can see the shelters projects. There's, they're on the right. And students study, our third grade students study, uh, shelters that humans live in across the world. Uh, choose one that represents their family or one they were interested in and build models of them and for other classes to come and see. Nice examples of these students. Do you want to add anything?
Well, just with Waldorf, um, as a parent, four students attending our school, what's lovely about the main lesson books is it's an opportunity for them to each showcase what they know. So the Waldorf idea is that blank page could be very similar to their lives. You can be and show up however you want. And so it's so wonderful to see how they are unique representations of the students and their different art abilities. And as I have some of them eighth graders, so as they get older, they're integrating those, those essays and everything they're writing and drawing out those maps so that they really understand it. And it always blows my mind when they tell me something that they've learned and remembered because they created it and they feel very proud of it. So what the students are doing right now is they're wrapping up their school year is they're actually binding their main lesson books. So it's a journey, a reflection of the year. They're looking at all they've created and they're binding it together into one book. So you have multiples throughout the year. Um, and they bring it home. And I love seeing that as a parent because they're really proud and they see how far they've come. And it's, it's beautiful for them. It gives them a sense of pride.
And the four students, you know, the library shelf full of.
I'll never get rid of it.
Um, another part of our program is classroom without walls and field trips. So our parents all mature for them. Um, as a district teacher, I remember it was eight hundred dollars for the bus. So we could go like one place a year, you know? And then at the charter schools, the parents really, they come together, they, they increase insurance on their policies, they get fingerprinted, they do this extensive um, volunteerism that are supposed to support these field trips and students go everywhere. They go locally for second, third grade. Um, fourth grade, they start going on camping trips to old country and these are multi-day overnight field trips. And our eighth graders, uh, just got back last week from backpacking in Point Reyes and learning backpack. So it's, it's always quite a bonding experience for the community. A lot of them are ocean guardian base. That's our ten-year.
Ten-year.
We've got our ten-year banner this year. Um, so we're very proud of that and they do all kinds of community service work on campus and in the community. Uh, we also are the first school to partner with the Monterey County Waste Divisions, that's on the left. Coming to help us sort our trash and compost. Compost are school lunches. And we also have a partnership with Meals on Meals to provide those lunches. Um, that have a biodegradable packaging. Some concepts, and we're very proud of that as well. And we worked on a new garden at our foothill sites. So with, uh, grants and parent volunteerism and then student care of each club having a garden bed. And then we're also known for some new programs. All of the students have music class. And we're actually, I think for our eighth graders, we have after-school theater programs for our E L A. And all students at our school learn how to knit and do all kinds of fiber arts that also increase through the grade. There's some pictures of them doing all of those fun engaging activities. Um, and a, a big part of our school is being out in the community. Uh, so we've got Candace and Dr. Zayas, uh, at a job fair at C S U M V. A student made kind of cards for, uh, the senior citizens down the street. They participated in the county math, or what do you call it, Dr. Gus? Math, math counts?
Athletics.
Mathletes. Okay, uh, we were in the P G parade, their floats. And we have adopted a soccer player from the union soccer team and they came to our school and they were very excited to see them. And then we participated in Martin Luther King, uh, Parade this year.
Yes, okay. We also did cards for Alliance on Aging. We love working with them for Mother's Day cards and Mount Penn State cards. Wonderful program and I believe we took second place for the athletics this year and that was wonderful. That's my boy in far right. He was so proud. He's like, are you gonna display my award? And I'm like, yes, it's still in the living room. So thankful that you run that. Thank you. Um, and then for the parade, we won the bubbly spirit award for the float. The parents made that float. It's so wonderful. Um, and then for the union soccer team, we were the school that sold the most tickets to go to the back-to-school game and our mascot went on the field. And then this coming May thirty-first game that they're having our choirs perform a national anthem and we're so excited about that.
So please come and see them. Uh, we have seasonal festivals at our school, um, lantern walks in the fall. Our youngest students make those beautiful lanterns and they go out and tell stories and, uh, celebrate the darkness as they are the lights in the darkness. And then we have a fun winter fair with crafts that students can make with their family. Um, and this year we got performances by our music classes. We had grandparents and loved ones day. Um, and then our spring festival fair is coming up this weekend. If you want to come, you're all invited. Saturday, we attended two. Uh, one zero zero four David Avenue, which is a grove. And, um, that's another just part of our school's philosophy is that we're celebrating the seasons as they change. And, um, students are doing activities related to the season. Candace wants to add, I'm sure.
No, I'm, I'm very excited about this Saturday. We have the opportunity, bring family members, encourage them to come. We celebrate dances around the world. So we have an African drumming group that comes every year from Oakland. They're wonderful. She's on Emmy. Um, and then we also have, um, a folk Gloria group coming from the Alice L Center of Art. So it's a whole day of entertainment. It'll be lots of fun. You bring your blankets and hang out and the eighth graders make food to support the money they need to raise for their eighth grade backpacking trip and there's crafts and it's wonderful.
Yeah, student enrichment, we are part of, uh, um, National Kindness um, movement that's going on. So we celebrate that each year. We had a great talent show. Um, and I can't tell what they're doing in some of those.
That was the, oh, the theater classic. They came to promote, um, attending and the, the speaker is wonderful. He's won the national championship five times. Um, he spoke about how he really wanted to have this dream of writing mountain bikes and doing tricks. And everyone told him he was crazy, but he got the degree and then now he's on his path of, uh, how he wanted to. So he was just promoting them to follow their dreams, which is wonderful. And then we, uh, work with the Zen Zen bilingual, uh, water assembly to promote conservation and they came to both campuses. That's in the far left.
Yes, thank you. And then you'll see our eighth graders holding an event for our kindergartners. Uh, games on the green. They ran different games for them to do. And then kindness ambassadors, the new classmate kindness pledges down below.
And then we have Ohana as well. We've had this wonderful collaboration with Brian Wolf, who's been doing, uh, mental fitness uh, meetings with our middle schoolers at lunchtime. And then he's helped provide our suicide prevention, mental health assemblies as well. It's been a wonderful collaboration. We're so thankful for Ohana.
Also come and do professional development for our staff. Along with Justin, you can look here as well. And so those are some of the wonderful things that we've been doing this year and we're happy to take any questions on our report. Thank you for having us. Hey, anybody have any questions?
Seems like you were just here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just like to, um, is that a question? It's mainly a comment. Um, first of all, congratulations for being one of the ranking in high performance in charter school category. That's, that's great. That's striking off. And, um, also congratulations on your increased seven points, seven point nine points overall.
Yes.
And I will say also kudos to you. Cause I've never seen this one in another charter school. So I know they're all different.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is. Very seventy-two. Council in Casa. I love the sound of it, especially if I don't even speak English. I understand what Casa means. Okay, being home, being loving, being wanting, being part of this. So kudos to you. And also I love the setting, how you orchestrated. And also I love the setting, how you orchestrated, you know, from K through eight. You know, how you get to classroom, you talk to parents, you come in with teachers, but I'm lying. This is, this kind of a counseling, counseling and mentality, you know, in, in, in any kind of disorders that you might have. Or stress or depression that we've seen the mother a while ago with that video, you know? How difficult she was dealing with depression and not being there for the kids. I think this casa, counseling, I read through it and it covers it all. And you know what? In order to succeed in education is where you combine. Where you live together, where you learn together. And as, as soon as you control that mentality of depression and social disorders, then you know what you're doing? The second step? You're targeting their education and they become more savvy and quick learners. So thanks to that. Also, I love the idea of the ambassadors. The Ambassador Restorative Justice Program.
Yes.
When I was at a high school, it's across the Salina High School, we pushed that agenda to make it happen in our school districts. We were highly criticized. They were going to make us students to become Nazis and hate each other and don't work with me because I'm better than you. What's the opposite is bringing these students in different cultures to get to know where they're from and how to respect each other. And recognize, you know, the violation of the rights in the school campuses. So I'm, I'm happy for that to see that. And finally, and this is, I think this happened this year. The licensed therapists in mental health, they are providing the kids, we signed the high school counselor that you have. Yes, well, and so when you wrap it up, I can see the whole environment on campuses with all those beautiful pictures. You know, everything looks perfect, but I know there might be up and downs on the road. So, you know, just be there, be patient, see. And we're together as a age. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you so much. Alright, well, we'll see you all Saturday.
Thank you so much. And we look forward to seeing you again soon. Congratulations on your hard work on the test logs. That's great. Thank you. Alright, so we are on to um, eight point six, open door charter school annual reports before since one oh three, uh, Dr. Bella.
Oh, we found here.
Yes, Michelle's gonna.
Great. So we've got our very own open door charter school. I say our very own because they're dependent as home charters. So. Uh, Nubia Padilla is the principal and um, she's going to share with you her annual report of the charter school. Thank you, Nubia. I think, do you guys have the PowerPoint already as well?
It kind of got fuzzy when it transitioned, I guess. Um, so. Yeah, so we are Monterey County Home Charter, I'm sorry, now calling ourselves the other charter school, Monterey County. We are open door charter Monterey County Office of Education, Education. So. So this year, um, we've had a lot of things going on and really trying to grow our program and really developing um, our staffing. So. Some of the things that we accomplished this year is that we have, um, the, the charter is designated to meet the needs of students sixteen over. Um, we prepare students for college and career. Um, and we have been doing an independent study model that is rigorous and standard based in supporting students in those transitions to college and career. And really looking at what is it that they need? What is it that they um, would benefit from in regards to their education? Um, and the oversight provided by all of you, thank you so much. And it's administered by the alternative education.
Yeah, one of our board members joining by phone.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I have a tendency to walk around when I present, so sorry. Um, so, so this, the charter schools I mentioned earlier is for sixteen and over. And some of the things that we really value with our students is that we. So provide a safe and supportive environment. Um, we are flexible. So some of our teachers will stay late or come in early or whatever works for the students. To ensure that if they have to work or get their child to childcare or whatever to school, that we're working around those schedules to still provide them the opportunity to graduate from high school. And we try to ensure that when we can, that the standards align to their college or career focus or the job that they're in to help them. Use their prior knowledge and or their areas of interest to help them grow academically. And we have MTSS partnerships um, for our school that support the health and wellbeing of our students. So this is our staff. So um, they couldn't be here today. They're busy um, with a few other events going on, but um.
We do have Dr. Smith here with us, so.
She just not getting.
Oh, she just, she's second. Some of them had students, some of them have been at um, Hartnell last night too. And Peggy was working on our LCAP today, um, helping support with that. So actually, I'm going to go back. We also hired a new teacher this year, Cynthia Padilla. She's no relation to me. But um, I really appreciate having her on board. She speaks Spanish and she is a math instructor. So it brings um, another strength to our program. Because now we can serve students that also are ELs. And that's been um, more difficult without a Spanish-speaking staff member on board. And it helps with the parent communications as well. So what are some of the things that we do to ensure that students can access um, the standards in the curriculum to graduate from high school? Uh, we do offer academic support. We have um, a teacher that comes in and um, has appointments with students so that they can get that extra support that they need. Because sometimes one hour a week, when you're coming in to do independent study, isn't enough. And we offer other support beyond that teacher as well, but they can have a focused hour that they've signed up for to get extra academic support. Um, each student has an individualized education plan. And we talked about a little bit, or I talked about it a little bit with um. How we try to uh, ensure that the standards that we can align to their career interests are aligned to those career interests or current jobs or um, college interests. So that's part of our um, individualized academic plan. We do work with them to do that. We've also been doing a lot of dual enrollment support, trying to help students go to Hartnell or MDC or another program while they're enrolled with us. To ensure that they're making that progress towards those goals as well. Um, and we've offered financial aid support with application. They have been completing the career assessment this year. And um, students are from open door invited to join all of our college and career field, field trips from the alt ed program. So um, so they can also see those colleges and those, uh, access to those programs that exist in our communities. So. So um, so we have a lot of professional development. And so because open door charter is overseen by the alternative education department. They do actually benefit from having access to the same professional development that we have at um, all that, in all that. So we have educational services that have been supporting with the curriculum and um, instruction program. And how do, how do we set students up for success, right? And continuing to do that. Uh, we also have McKay working with arts and technology. And they've done some workshops for the teachers with um, how to incorporate arts and um, other interests in that area. For students. We have had um, the scholar system through our, our tech committee present. So they're doing our, but their final presentation next Monday. If anybody wants to join for that presentation, they've been really great about talking with our um. With our staff about the different struggles that they felt as students growing up in similar um, community or similar. Circumstances for our students and what helped them be successful. And then they also are research-based. And so they are also researching, what is it that we need? To ensure that students who were considered at promise are getting that support that they need to continue to grow and develop. And we have trauma-informed um, education as well. So, so far this year, we've had, had twenty-three graduates as of April first. We think that we're going to have thirty-eight graduates, which is really great. Um, and forty-five students are already planning to return. And we have a waitlist going into next year, which is definitely growth for the charter. We've kind of been trying to struggle to get um, more kids signed up. And sometimes we're like, okay, like, and we're keeping our numbers up. But um, this year we've had a lot of kids, um, or a lot of young adults or adults come in and join our waitlist. And a lot of this growth is through word of mouth. So when um, our students leave us, they're recruiting their parents sometimes, their siblings, their husbands, their wives. And they're coming and joining us. And that's such a treasure because what that means is that we are connecting to them and we are providing them the right supports. If they're trusting these other people, um, and they're sending them to us, right? They're just, they're trusting that we will serve their, um, their, the recommendations, just like we serve them. Um, and so students are earning an average of twenty-five credits a semester, which is great achievement. And the attendance rate has been really wonderful. Went up one percent from last year from ninety-two to ninety-three this year. So youth true survey, we do this every year. And this is such a nice, um, students get to do comments at the end of the youth true survey. And we captured some of those words that the students used to talk about what is wonderful about open door charter and what they felt coming to our program. So um, the teacher, so some of the things, so academically challenging, are students feeling academically challenged? Yeah. But they also feel supported when they are academically challenged. They know that the teacher will be there to support them. The teacher does care if they're learning. That's, you know, sometimes people are like, the teacher doesn't care what I learn. They just don't, this, we all, they always take care of um. Open door charter does care what their students are learning and how they're progressing and checking in with them regularly. Um, prepared for college and career. This is what they said about that. The staff is very helpful as well as other opportunities. As an example, we've connected some students with Monterey County Works. Um, and very helpful in finishing high school. And now they're motivated to continue their education after having been at open door charter. Um, and they feel supported by their teachers. I like that the teachers are helpful and understanding. Um, this was inspired me to do my best. It has given me a second chance to complete my education. And this is a very supportive program. And I'm happy to be a student here at this school. Such wonderful things. Um. That's the last slide. Yep, it is. So. And we are looking forward to presenting our charter renewal next year, but we are growing and we are developing. And I think that there's a lot of strengths that will continue to grow um, next years. Any questions?
Yeah, so when this was initially.
Charter. Yes.
Can't find the word. So it was supposed to be for eighteen and above. And we went to sixteen and above because we needed the numbers. As you look forward to your recharter, are you looking to continue to be sixteen above or make some sort of change? Is it under consideration?
We maybe, we are considering potentially moving um, up more and or having students that we know are doing well at Salinas Community School, but really need independent study. Um, coming over to open door charter. So they would have to go through the Salinas Community School as minors to maybe transition over. Part of that being that sometimes they sign up for a full independent study and don't realize how much um, effort, especially for sixteen-year-olds. They really do need a little bit more handholding sometimes. Um, and having a one-day-a-week program sometimes work for some students, but with modified independent study, they get kind of a little bit of both at Salinas Community School. So.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a question for you. And this is in regards to what the trustee, uh, my first son is um, asking you. Page one oh seven, a student, a student aged served. And I got some numbers. So I noticed that according to my calculation. That you're serving seventy-seven percent of students that are between thirty to thirty-nine, twenty to twenty-nine, nineteen. And eighteen years of age. Seventy-seven percent of your students are more adults than.
Yes, that's true.
My question is that why is that?
I think that sometimes the students in our community don't know that there is an opportunity to finish high school in this kind of environment where it's flexible. And when they find out about us, um, they come in, like I said, they're sending their family members over. And sometimes their family members are their mothers or their aunts or a cousin, right? That didn't graduate. And so they've already been out of school and in the working world for a while. And um. If they, they find the flexibility works for them. And not every program is as flexible or not every program is willing to, you know? One hour a week uh, is much more flexible than sometimes having to be at an adult ed program in another place where you have to be there three or four hours a day to finish that diploma.
Thank you. My second question is, if we were to cut it down at at least fifty percent. Then there will be like thirty-five openings for the youth that are in independent studies, that are struggling behind credits. I'm not saying that um, we should not give the adults the education, but I think it's something to re- really think forward. If they just get in their high school diploma or GD, there's other resources among our community, like Hartnell College.
Yeah, but Hartnell Char- College charges them if they're not a graduate. So that can be an impact on a family's ability to go to school. If they can't get financial aid. So that's been detrimental to some of our families. Um, having Salinas Community School work alongside open door charter, we found a really good blend that when students really do need that independent, like. Can't really come to school every single day, even for the modified independent study. But we're noticing that they're doing a lot of work at home. We definitely, they are priority students for going to open door. So they get first steps um, at the moveover. So we are reserving those spaces. At the same time, we're also having to move students that are sixteen over that are struggling at open door over Salinas Community School. Because they do need extra or they want the socialization that a more traditional school provides without necessarily having to be there all day. Due to emotional or whatever other uh, concerns, maybe having to work and go to school at the same time.
Just, just a thought. Um, on if. Cardinal campuses a while ago, I like to walk around in those neighborhoods. And I noticed right in the front of the building door, a pamphlet saying, if you want to complete your GD or high school. We will provide it for you for free. We will give you voucher. And so when I see those informations coming on hand, I goes, why not taking advantage of it if it is free, right? And so that, that's something that maybe in the future you can dig it out with what grants can you apply for? Um, and, and voucher these students to go off to another school. So we can open up more vacancies for.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think that um, the nice thing about Salinas Community School and like open door charter, something where we offer, um. Like I said, like different locations and different places that are more accessible to some of their families. Yeah.
I guess my reason is this, we're focusing more in helping older students than the younger students. I submitted a three applications, not through me, but through my people that are living in Salinas, applying to get into this school. Uh, and there was no vacancy.
Is there, is that minors?
No, because the capacity was full. The capacity, so they couldn't.
Minor students weren't able to get into our program.
There were students that were struggling with credits and independent studies. So I refer their parents to go.
Did they reach out? Cause I reached out to almost every single minor student and had a meeting with them and double checked that they, that they understood the parameters of open recharter. So I do take the time to meet with our minor students and just explain what independent study is. Just because I think that they need to understand what they're walking into. And I don't want them to leave a campus. Um, if they are, if they think that it's going to be just easier just to go for independent study. I want them to know that there is a lot of work to be done and it's independent work. And that can be challenging. So I do meet with all of the families. I don't discourage anybody and we don't ever turn anybody away, but we do explain the parameters and ensure that this is the best fit for them. And if they say yes, that they're willing to do the work and they think that that's the best fit, we do take them. So I'm not sure exactly what happened. And if it was towards the end of the year, it does get more difficult because we are closing out files and closing out students. So if they signed up in like, let's say May or like the end of April, then you're right, we, we were full at that particular time. And we were at capacity to not be able to necessarily take them in. But earlier in the year, I think we took in every minor that we got.
Yeah, I even, just to wrap it up, I even reached out to Mr. Bella in regards to one of her students. Who was being bullied and studies, struggling, lacking in credits. I mean, didn't want to go to school. I said, the mom, the mama reached out to me and said, go to your local trustee. I'm from the county. No, Mrs. Kambo, but I know you. And I know you can help. So I did what? Come in Salinas Community School. And then I told, do you remember? Do you remember that case two years ago?
I do.
And we couldn't fit her in. So, you know, sixteen-year-old girl. And up to now, she just.
Yeah.
Walked out of school, no GD, no high school. She's at home.
Yeah.
Stressed out.
So send her to us again, because I'm not sure what happened. Um, because I, like I said, we meet with every student. We don't turn them away. We do meet with them and talk to them and we welcome them. Sometimes they don't show up for their intake appointment. Sometimes there's a bunch of different things that happen and we'll start calling and calling. And then we have to move on to the next person on the list.
No, I understand. I understand you.
But we are definitely like trying to get every student that we can in there. And one of the great things is that we increased our teaching capacity this year to allow for even more students. So last year we did only have two teachers. This year we have um, both, well, one teacher and, and Peggy is like a, like a half teacher, basically. So we only had like one and a half teachers versus now we have two and a half. So we only had like one and a half teachers versus now we have two and a half teachers.
I just felt that we built up a beautiful school, with a lot of potential, and we're focusing in adults. That's my wrap it up, that's my wrapping.
We're not trying to focus.
Thank you so much, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to eight point seven, annual California Community Schools Partnership Program. CCSPP reporting and implementing education plans for Salinas Community School, Wellington Smith Junior School. And open door, open door charter school, page one twenty-nine, Dr. Bella.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board, Dr. Gus, and members of the community, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Veronica Lewis. And of course, Principal Padilla, uh, they, uh, are instrumental in the implementation of the California. Uh, Community School Partnership Program grants that we have at the Salinas Community School. Uh, they have a wonderful presentation, uh, set up for you. Uh, I want to set the stage by telling you that this award, while, uh. Granted to the Salinas Community School, uh, gives us the opportunity to provide services and resources. To all of our sites, and, and thus you see in the report a plan for Wellington Smith Junior and Open Door. And so, um, as Ms. Padilla said in her, uh, prior presentation. We try to have clear articulation between all of our departments and all of our programs and schools. And so you may see in the report that the grant refers to Salinas Community School, and that is correct. That the grant is titled Salinas Community School, but we share the wealth to all of our schools, and thus a plan for all of our schools. So with that, uh, Ms. Lewis, thank you, and Principal Padilla.
Good afternoon or morning, mid-morning, everyone, um, wanted to talk about our, uh, foreign community schools a little bit today. Give you a bit of an update of the work that we're doing, um, and this is in regards to the grant, as Dr. Bella mentioned. Uh, the CCSPP California, uh, Community School Partnership Programs. And so we're here to give you a little bit of updates of what we've been up to. And if you could please speak into the microphone, we just have one more member on the call, stay close. So then here, we're, um, just giving you a, uh, an overview of what the community schools encompass. Which is what Dr. Bella mentioned, that it's all three of our, um, alternative education schools, including some of those school campuses. We have, um, open door charter that we were speaking on, and then also Wellington Smith, which is our, um, court school. So to tell you a little bit about, um, the grant, the grant is a five-year grant, and it's designed to, um. Uh, do all things that with the whole student in mind. So, um, we are in year three of this five-year, um, grant, we're in our implementation phase. And so who we are, we are focused on the whole child, whole student in this case. Uh, we are committed to bringing all of the services and supports to make sure that they, they are successful and that they feel. Um, engaged and in, in their learning, as it is their environment. Um, we are, um, our goal, I'm sorry, are, um, to have the students feel valued, supported, and engaged. Um, yeah, through our implementation, uh, plan, what we've done to figure out what are the goals are. What the interests of our students, we, we do the youth truth as well yearly, we also have implemented part. Parsec reel, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, um, and this is a, uh, software platform. In which we're able to gather information from students and families via, uh, in writing, voice, or video, whatever their comfort level is. The platform will then, um, break down the data points and, and give us ideas of which direction to go in. What they are more interested in and what the needs are, and, um, that's what we use as a template, figuring out what resources to bring in. Um, here, what we want to be, of course, is to have increased, um. Um, increased services and, um, we want to have.
Yes, so, so we are looking at how we can increase service, so there was a little bit of a holdup this year. Our CD approval for expenditures came in really late, actually like just about three or four months ago, right? We already had a bunch of planned expenditures, and some of those expenditures are still being worked out, because now we've had to move them into next year's plan. But, um, we did have some things go on this year that I'm really excited about, so we had PK doing parent presentations. And we had a consistent group of about fifteen families that were showing up. Um, some of the moms will say things like, wow, that was really helpful, or I learned a lot through these processes, because. Yes, we are whole child, and whole child encompasses our community and our families and the opportunities that they have through our school programs. And so we're looking at expanding even more so next year, um, by having more parent involvement opportunities, including partnering with the Y. Um, to have after school, like, um, we're actually having our final site council and the different organizations from this community are coming to present today. And the Y is one of them, because they are going to be pulling our families on the type of services they offer, and the type of services they're going to be providing for us next year. That's gonna be part of our discussion, um, for example, like yoga classes or, uh, classes where maybe a parent and child can come in to do some activity together. Maybe even a cooking class, or, you know, so the parents are gonna be pulled on that. Um, the parents have also been participating in Parsec Reel, that's really wonderful, so they have been giving us their feedback on what they're finding with our programs and what they're needing. Let me think of what else, so, um, we have, um, Veronica and, um, Ally work together a lot too to support like. Career opportunities or career engagement, um, so college and career visits, the job fair that you guys might have, um, seen a couple of weeks ago. It was wonderful, and from our first college and career fair this year to our. College and Education Fair to our College and Career Fair this year, the vendors that came twice were like, wow, we've seen so much development, so much growth. And the kids are like asking questions, the rock, the mock interviews, so we are having a bunch of different activities to support students. At the school, but also thinking about their futures as they move through our programs. Um, we think, so we also are having PK come back next year as well, so PK is the parent, um. Institute for Quality Education, sorry, thank you, um, and they're coming back next year to do a second workshop from the one they did, they did earlier this year. Uh, we are having, um, a showing of Fentanyl High at various, like, couple of theaters in the Monterey County area, I don't know if you've heard of that film. Um, but we are going to be, uh, funding that, sponsoring that, and hopefully bringing our students in our school community, but also inviting. The community at large, if we have extra tickets, we plan to, um, to support, like to understand how accessible sometimes those things are. Without even the intention of having accessibility for those drugs, right, uh, because our parents need to understand that, um, this. The, one of the parents in the, um, showing said something about, um, their child was basically poisoned, right? They didn't intend to take a drug, they thought they were doing something different, and unfortunately, um, are no longer with us due to that, how. Um, prevalent that can be in our communities. So, do you remember the ones that you remember off the top of your head?
But for the essence of time. Okay. Have a lot of other.
So just the demographics of those students that we serve, right, we have a lot of students that are Title I students, Medicaid evento, formerly incarcerated, free and reduced lunch. Um, we'll move through this really quickly, some of the field trips we already talked about, they do visit colleges and universities and career centers. And so these are goals that we have going into the future, and so, uh, greater access to support and enrichment activities and opportunities, we're looking at, like. We talked about the Y, uh, building, and the Y also for doing other things with the students at the Y. Um, build capacity with, um, we have speakers that have come in and presenters that have come in, uh, to increase our professional development. Um, parent involvement, we talked about, I'm just gonna like kind of. Uh, multiple, yes, so, um, so some of the needs that we have been working on already and that we've already checked off and are in process. And will continue and have been continuing, um, are up on the, our presentation board. And so these are the activities and where they were during the school year and how we need them and access them. So Wonderwood Ranch, the horse riding that you saw, uh, Mecate with the arts program, Artist Inc. is right now doing a mural, um, counseling food base. And planned events coming into the future, and we have a parent and student joining us for the community school, uh, the summit. Yes, so that's our first year taking a parent and student with us, so we're really excited. This is what we did, doing the kids enjoy, um, even participating. And a wonderful resource center that makes everybody feel at home. And this is where we're going, right, so we're, we deserve more students, continue to build partnerships with more agencies. In part of today's meeting with our site council, we'll be part of that, and continue to align to LTA bowls and find ways to continue this even after the grant is over. Any questions? I, I slammed, sorry, I tried.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you for the report.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Uh, yes, okay, so I will cover the employee of the month one right now, we do not have all of our employees here. Which is a shame, because they're absolutely amazing, so I'll, but I'll be very quick. First employee of the month is our very own, um, Dr. Constantino Silva, our senior director of our migrant education program. And we had him here a few minutes earlier, uh, earlier in the meeting, I'm so sorry, we lost him, because just an absolute rock star. Any of you who have attended migrant speech in Bay, migrant parent conference. You just get to see him in action with all the energy and passion to support our students and our families. And if we weren't short on time, I could say so much more, but we're short on time, so congratulations to Constantino Silva, Dr. Silva. Um, next Dylan Holmes, we wanted to recognize him as well, he is from our Mecate. Our Ed Services Division, but specifically in the Mecate Department. Uh, he and his team go out, they record city council meetings, they make a ton of educational videos. In support of schools across the county, does it with a smile, does it with passion and energy, and we're just really excited for him. And to wrap, uh, his comments up, he was one of our former students. Who went through Millennium Charter High School when it was, uh, alive and well. And was, uh, located right here within the MCOE, uh, Mecate Department. So he got that, um, firsthand training all of those years ago, and then as a student in that program. He also, uh, participated in an internship where he learned additional skills. After the school closed, um, or after he graduated, uh, he continued to work with us as an intern. And then eventually, when a full-time position opened up, uh, he obviously met all the requirements, applied for the position and got that position. And he's just, he's stellar, so we're really excited because we feel like we have helped, uh, grow that young man through the years. And he's doing an amazing job, and then lastly, not able to join us today because he is in a classroom right now. At Miranda Meadows with our, um, uh, special education students is Edgar, oh Edgar, I might pronounce you. Thank you, who is just the most passionate, um, but calm, very calm educator. Who works with some of our, um, students who have some very big challenges. We were in his room this week with this surprise, and as you can imagine, the kids get really excited when we come in with wounds in a bag. And even with all of that excitement, he, uh, Edgar was just able to call all the students, everything's fine. That so, wh- while it could have been chaos, it was not because of his outstanding, um, teaching ability. And we're just so proud of him and thankful for the great work that he does, so thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize those employees.
All right, give our congratulations to all of them, thank you, um, we're gonna go back to item six point two. Request to attend the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials Conference. And we just had heard from Sandra, and are there any other comments or discussion, uh, on that item?
I may have given the wrong impression that I thought that Naleo didn't have anything to do with education. And if I did, I apologize for that, I don't, uh, that is not the impression I meant to give. What I meant to say was that its focus. Is not education, and that everything actually, in my way of thinking. Many, many conferences have to do with, um, lots of other things. And education can be brought back to the, you know, you can make, uh, education as, um. As a part of, of a lot of different conferences, and I'm sure Naleo has some great, um. Uh, opportunities for that, as you say, Sandra, I, I have not attended the Leo. But what I was trying to say is that last year you gave a very good report on what you actually did go to. And it was a focus on education. And I felt like the, um, the, although very well-written. Your report to us on all of the education-related items that you went to during the Leo. Are things that would have been. Uh, done, you could have done those same, you would learn the same things from CSBA. And I appreciated that you said you thought Naleo would help you think outside of the box. But none of the things that you provided to us, did I personally think, really allowed. Us to think outside of the box, and so that was what my, um. My concern was with that, because I feel like money spent of the publics. Should be spent on training us to be better county board members. And I don't think, I actually personally do not think that CSBA or the county. Related, county board member related conferences are limited. I think that they are very important and, um, and teach us good things about our roles as board members. So I don't know, I, I did not see anything that was necessary, um, in your last year's report. On top of it, you mentioned that Naleo went over housing and healthcare, and that CSBA does not do that. I actually would disagree with you on that, CSBA has had many things on teacher housing. In fact, they are doing a, a particular, um, emphasis on how county offices. Offices of education and help can help with teacher and classified staff housing. And they've actually asked our county office to be part of that through CSBA, it's a direct. Impact to our county for that, and so, um, and, and then on healthcare as well. There's a lot of emphasis on mental wellness for our students, as well as for our staff at CSBA. So I just wanted you to know that I think that CSBA doesn't just focus on things. Only in a classroom, but rather on the whole child and the whole staff member. But they fo- do focus on stuff related to education, and, and I think that that is what is the most important thing. And when we, as a county board, spend money on things that are not as closely related. To our task as county board members, I feel like that takes away from all the good work that happens in our classrooms. And that's why I personal, personally think that although Naleo might allow you to think outside the box. That last year's report, although very well-written, didn't teach me that, so that's my personal view.
I've, I've, I've got a comment if I can, um. Because this is turning into a he said, she said, and we take it personal when we don't get approved for something, and that's really what this seems like. I, I, you took it personally, that we didn't agree with you, but with that being said, housing. The city of Solidad and Solidad School District just had a ceremony because they're gonna do. Um, build housing for teachers, for education, and that was something we've been talking about since I was on the school board ten years ago. Um, so that's an ongoing thing, so that's not true that we don't deal with those things, foster care and homelessness. May twenty-third, Cabrillo College, a full day on foster care and homelessness. What I'm getting at is, we can get all of that here, we don't need to go to Atlanta, we don't need to go to Las Vegas, we don't need to. We don't need to go to Atlanta, we don't need to go to Las Vegas, we don't need to go to Dallas. We don't, I'll be the first guy to jump on the bus to go to San Antonio when they have a conference there. If we're gonna have a conference that's gonna help us. But I'm not gonna go for the sake of going to get something that I can get here in Monterey County or in the state. We can go to San Diego, Sacramento, Monterey. And I'm not gonna take personal that you guys didn't approve something for me. So be it. Let's move on. I don't, I think we're spending a lot of time, it's now 12:10, a lot of time talking about something that should have been a very easy, we vote on it, it doesn't get approved or it does, and we move on.
Any other comments? Sandra?
Thank you so much, Annette, for your comments, you know. I appreciate that a lot. And everybody make their own decision, it's upon whatever way they want to go. It's okay with me. I've been a board member for so many years, you know, and I've lasted it for so many years because I don't think things personally myself. I'm not getting angry, I'm not telling anyone, I'm not, you know. But you can never, ever compare one project to the other, at all, ever, you know. Whether you see SBA totally different, Naleo totally different, okay? I enjoy being there and I gotta share with you something that I was not planning to do it right now until further. But May 5, 6, and 7, we were in L.A. with Naleo, helping how to develop a STEAM Academy. And it wasn't just us, it was board members from all the nationwide that they were applying to get the grant paid in full to attend this conference. And we were lucky to be accepted. We participated in those three, two days and a half, and it was beautiful. You know, education, STEAM Academy. So I have my own issues, you know, and you have your own. But as a board, we must need to learn to work together and don't think anything personal, you know. Whether you did not approve it or not, I will be attending a Leo for my own benefit because I'm working closely with them. And I will never stop doing that. Now, going back to what you said a while ago, money-wise, you know, county board members choosing income tax people money to pay for their own development and growing experience in educational system is costing us a lot of money. I understand where you're coming from. But then I question myself, why are we so different from the districts? Why are county boards so different in the mentality of educating ourselves in educational system in compared to the school districts? Because as I attended in a Leo, there was a lot of superintendence involving that, a lot of trustees participating in that. And so you, what you're saying is that they are using the money not wisely. And you know what I'm gonna do from now on? I'm gonna contact the news, the TV channel, and express my concerns from now on peacefully. The weakest county board are not approving this because it's not what you are choosing for and you not believe in the system. And I have all my rights to do it. So, you know, I'll take it from here, I'll deal on my own, and this has nothing to do with all of you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments?
Do you have a comment?
Oh, Virginia?
Yeah. I think that's one thing that we have to learn from each other. I'm being a little more about my Leo, the more I have learned, the more I wanna go. I would respect your decision for it today. However, I think I even would like to go and marry to the one she went. Because that will give me the opportunity to, to learn something that I don't know at this point. So I'm here as a Hispanic, mainly representing Hispanics, so, yeah. I think we are just going by the issue that, or the worry that they are elected official and that turns that to a political thing that I don't think is a call, oh, Naleo. But again, I would respect what you decide. But I disagree with the position that you've explained before. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I would like to just add something that in our policy, our own current board policy, that we state that meetings or conferences outside of the state of California are considered to be exceptional, meaning they're not regular. And so that is feeding into this. And it is not about anything personal, it's not about race or, or anything like that for me. It, it, it is about being significantly, it, you know, Heather just underlined it for me and I, I didn't pull it back up. But the attendance has to be significantly valuable to the improvement of educational programs related to M C O E. I gave my opinion about whether I thought last year's were. And that's just my personal opinion on, and on the report. And so it's based on our current board policy.
All right, can I get a motion?
What are we looking for to?
You either moved to approve or?
I, I moved to disapprove. The attendance to the Leo conference for, this will come.
Okay, it's been moved to disapprove. Can I get a second? Second, can I get a recall vote?
Heather Owen?
So I is to disapprove, yes, so I.
Oh, I, you wanna approve the motion.
Make it you vote the right way.
I, I, I made the motion to. So you said I, you agree to disapprove.
I agree with this, I.
Annette Eastac, aye. John McPherson?
Aye.
Virginia Mendoza?
No.
Jaime Fernandez?
Aye.
Mary Claypool?
Aye.
Sandra Ocampo?
Aye.
Okay, motion has been approved. All right, we're going to move to 6.3, adoption of resolution number 242552, U.S. Forest Reserve Fund, page 29. And this is to you, Dr. Stanley.
Thank you. So this is almost our annual resolution for forest reserve funds. We don't get a lot of forest reserve funds in Monterey County. This year it was 27,000, last year it was 25,000, so just a tiny little bit. You can see on page 31 what the division is based on the square miles in national forest lands. And you can also see there that we take $50 out for administrative purposes before we allocate it out to our districts. So this resolution is to recognize our forest reserve funds and then to approve the allocation to our districts.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, roll call vote?
Heather Owen?
Aye.
Annette Eastac?
Aye.
John McPherson?
Aye.
Virginia Mendoza? Jaime Fernandez?
Aye.
Mary Claypool?
Aye.
Sandra Ocampo?
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved and, or sorry, it's been approved, motion passes.
Thank you. And can I just say that, but we wonder about the reauthorization in the future, of course, with all of the federal challenges that we're having with funding right now. But, yeah, so we'll see.
Okay, we're moving on to new business action items. We're on to item 8.8, payment of claims for April 2025, page 197. And that's also you, Dr. Stanley.
Thank you. So these are payment of claims for April. I did not have any questions in advance. But there, there were a couple that I thought maybe you would wonder about. One of them was on page 201, it was F W R E F Monterey. That's just the Hilton. And what that was is the reservation for the migrant speech and debate. So I looked at it and I was like, what is F W R E F? So another one that had changed is on page 203, and that's for 44,742. That says Marlin Leasing Corporation. And that's one that we haven't had before because it used to just be Xerox. So it's just a company now that is doing the invoicing for Xerox. So it's the same purpose, but it's just a new name for you. Any, any questions I can answer?
Okay, we're gonna move on to 8.9, Monterey County School District and Charter Schools, 2024-25, Second Intern summary, page 233, Dr. Stanley.
Thank you. So this is our look at what, where all the districts are for second interim. The red is about the same as it was for first interim, but I have to tell you, it's not quite as bad. So when I, when I was doing all of the negatives down there, I was like, okay, well, not quite so bad. And what I looked very specifically at is what they are, if they're recovering after the second subsequent, subsequent year. And what I've seen is that there's more recovery that's coming in after the second subsequent year. So that is, is a positive direction that our districts are moving in. If you look at the Charter Schools page, which is page 236, a lot of them are still keeping that 3% in there. And that is only because I haven't updated those M O Us. I mentioned before that I was going to make their ending balance have to be 5%. And it's simply because we haven't updated the M O Us to enforce that at this point. So that's why they're still sitting at 3%.
Any questions for Dr. Stanley? All right, thank you, Dr. Stanley. 810, first reading of board policy 3320, claims and actions against the Monterey County Office of Education, page 237, Dr. Porras.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees. I, I'll kind of review these relatively quickly for you since I didn't get any questions ahead of time. But on this particular board policy 3320, what the changes that you'll notice are all in reference to new laws that have been passed very recently. And specific in this one concerning the childhood sexual assault laws and reporting periods around those that have changed, namely AB 452 and Senate Bill 558. Those are the two biggest notations of changes, just basically needing to follow where the current law has recommended those changes or required those changes. There are some other changes inside there as well in regards to monetary limits and time limits for claims that are filed to the board yourselves. And so again, if you read through there, you'll see it, but all of these are right up in line with the changes in the assemblies. So nothing too creative in there, but we wanted to make sure that we were on.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? All right, seeing that, we're gonna move to 811, first reading of deletion of board policy 3350, conference and travel, page 243, again to you.
The, this one, this reads a little funny, but here's what's going on. The, this board policy in its whole is being deleted. And the reason for that was, as we began to read through it, we realized that they were, part of it was addressing the board and part of it was addressing the superintendent. And as you know, there are differences between superintendent policies and board policies. And so what we did was extract out what was board rights and responsibilities, which was going into essentially board policy 9240. It's still in policy committee, it should be coming to you for first read. But everything that's relevant within this policy to the board, you will see in that board policy that's coming to you. We've been working on that. And then.
Wait, can I correct that? Board bylaw?
Bylaw, excuse me, bylaws. And then the rest of it that has reference to superintendent policies being addressed as superintendent policy. So that's why the whole thing in, 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 it's in total is being deleted and then we're bringing it back into the appropriate places.
All right, thank you. Any questions about that? Okay, seeing that, we're gonna go to 812, first reading of board bylaw 9250, compensation for board members, page 247.
The, essentially, the big change in this particular item was in the definition, as the board had discussed last time, the definition of what an immediate family member is. And so you'll see that noted again in a different color, most likely green. And what we're doing is following the labor code section of what an immediate family is. And so just tightening up that definition. Again, this is following the board's direction to include this into the, into the board bylaw.
Thank you. Any questions?
And I can help you with.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're on 813, first reading of board bylaw 9270, conflict of interest, page 253.
Okay, again, similar to the first one that we addressed, we had new laws that came into the books, Senate Bill 1181 and Senate Bill 1243. And what it did is essentially increased thresholds for certain disclosure requirements. And so what you're reading there are what reflected inside of those assembly bills, so, and Senate bills, excuse me. And so you can read those through. It also has a little notation here that you'll see also on the upcoming board bylaw in regards to 9240. This is in reference to the ethics required of its training for board members. That's a mutation that you'll see listening there as well. And I think we're about ready to have the Keenan version of that too. So, very close.
Yeah, I had a note on that. In order to be in compliance, I do need that ethics training. So that's still coming for us.
It is still coming.
Okay, any questions on?
Yes, that one, it said on page 253, I think it is, says the, where did, oh, see, I lost it quick.
The conflict of interest code must be approved by the appropriate code viewing body. Who's the, who is that?
So if we're going through Keenan, they're, they're, they're authorizing, they're saying, yes, you certified that you went through the training. And there's a time limit that's, you have to be in a certain amount of time. That operating agent will say, yes, you did it. And then once that's certified, then it comes to the superintendent's office and we have record.
So it's not an internal reviewing board?
No, it's, it's through, it's through, in this case, it'd be Keenan.
Got it.
Think of it as you get the certificate at the end of the bylaw that says you did.
All right, any other questions? All right, we're gonna move on to nine reports from superintendent and/or staff. So we have 9.1 Superintendent's Report, Dr. Gus.
Okay, well, it's been a very busy month, but I know we are short on time. So I am going to pass down the report that describes all the various events and important meetings that we've had in the month of May. And I just want to speak to a couple of those. The first one is, you heard a little bit earlier about the college and career fair that M C O E held. It was held at C S U M B Salinas City Center. And I just want to do a huge shout out for Ally and our alternative education team. The event was amazing and you all would have loved it because we had a gladio table there. And you should have seen Terry Pimentel in action with those students. They walk by, they sit down, take the test. She created stickers that the students could wear that described like, you know how the gladio tool will say organizer or builder, problem solver? Anyway, they got to wear that sticker. The other great thing about that day was all of the employers that were there to speak to the students. Terry was able to make it around to most of those tables. And then when Dr. Porras was able to get there, he did the same thing, going out to the employers to help get the content for their business into gladio. And a perfect example of that was M S T at their table, where they were giving students a photo sheet of paper that would say, if you have a high school diploma, here are all the jobs that are available through M S T that you could be qualified for. If you have an A degree, here's what you qualify for. You have B A degree, et cetera. You get the idea. So it was just a great chance for us to recruit those employers, to get their information built into gladio and an amazing opportunity for students. The other item that I really wanted to make sure you're aware of is, you'll see on my report that we did have a meeting in South, well, we had a meeting in Greenfield to share an update on the feasibility study for the Greenfield. to share an update on the feasibility study for the Greenfield unification petition. If you recall, that item is scheduled to be heard at the state board meeting in July. Greenfield got the update, and then we went to South Monterey Joint Union High School District. This was Marguerite Leone, who shared, here's what the law says about these matters. And then Christine White, our auditor, who did the feasibility study with us. And she shared her findings on what it would look like, both financially and in regard to curriculum and instruction, if Greenfield Elementary unified with Greenfield High School, and if King City High School were left to be just alone as a district, or if, what would happen if they unified with King City Elementary School District? The reason the report covers that item is because when this item got to the State Board of Education, Mike Fine, the CEO of Refit Matt, did write a letter to the State Board expressing his concerns about this unification. His greatest concern is that they do have an I-bank loan, and that that I-bank loan, if it were not repaid and unification occurred prior to it being paid off, it could cause the district to default on the loan because part of the agreement, the loan agreement document says that Greenfield High School is the collateral for that loan, and you cannot unify until the, or you cannot reorganize yourself until that loan is paid off. So the presentation was made in South Monterey. Great questions came up. It was a very good crowd. We answered all of those questions. And tonight, that board will be meeting to consider whether or not they would like to ask the state board for another extension. The Greenfield community would like this matter to be extended. And of course, we would like this to be extended and so that we have the time that it takes to be able to weigh all of these options. And so if the South Monterey Board tonight decides to ask for a continuance, then we will be signing and sending that letter to the state board to ask that this matter be continued. So that's the update. That's where we're at. If we have any further activity on this item, then of course, we will call a county committee meeting and then kind of talk about next steps that the county committee might want to take or not, depending on how this item is going. So that's the update. The other thing is, I wanted to pass out to all of you the calendar of high school graduation ceremonies. So if any of you would like to attend the high school ceremonies for the districts in your trustee area, now you will have the dates and times for those graduations. And then lastly, I'm not going, well, I'm sorry. I'm not going to talk about facilities committee because I'm sure Mary will cover that under her report. So I just want to wrap my report up. Board member reports or comments, in case you wanted to give an update on that. But the last thing that I did want to mention is, I did have a request from a few board members who are interested in visiting our Wellington Smith Program in Juvenile Hall, our Salinas Community School Program in the Youth Center, and our TIP program that's currently hosted at the Salinas Community Center facility. We'll be setting up these three visits for the fall. And I would like to know from the board, are there any other specific programs that you would like to visit? And if so, then we'll set up visits to any additional programs as well. Any requests?
Well, I don't, you know.
I would like to visit any of the programs that you recommend that we learn more about, that we're making decisions on anyway. And those were ones that we're making decisions on. I personally haven't seen them. Are there other ones that other people haven't visited yet? I don't know.
Well, if there are no requests at this moment, please do let me know anytime this month. If you'd like to see, like, if you want to see Head Start, if you want to see migrant program, special education, TIP is part of our special education. If you have not seen a deaf and hard of hearing program or our students that have severe health risks at A Vingham, those programs might be of interest to you as well. So anyway, think about it. Do let me know because we're in the process of setting up those three locations right now. But if there are any others, please do let us know. And if you are going to be attending any of our graduation ceremonies, would you please let Cindy know so that we can have a reserved seat for you up on the stage? It just helps us if we know who's coming, and yeah, we will be there. So with that, I'm gonna wrap up my comments. Oh, and you do have your calendar of events at your area. If there's anything here on this calendar that you would like Cindy to register you for, please do let her know.
Thank you.
All right, staff reports, nine point two. We have early learning reports and special education annual reports. Nine point two point one and nine point two point two, that's in our agenda.
Yes, they're written reports. And Dr. Vella, I'm so sorry, but we had a required meeting at noon. So he's sitting out in the hallway taking that required meeting for Head Start. And we do have Beth with us. If you'd like Beth to answer any questions on the special education report, she's able to do so.
Do you have any questions?
I just, it's not really a question, but just wanted to point out that one of our teachers was Teacher of the Year, and it was pretty exciting to watch him win that. And, you know, that would maybe be under board member comments. But since you're here, thank you for having such a great staff and teachers and to help the students who need the most in many ways have such challenging situations.
Thank you. We have a lot of great teachers.
We do.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, just a comment. Congratulations once again to the special education teacher. His name is Will Combley.
Got it here.
Thank you very much.
We hope everyone enjoyed that.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten, comments by board members. Are there any board members that have a comment?
Just a couple things. Dr. Gus and I and staff met with Norm Groot of the Farm Bureau about gladio to try and, you know, fill in the employer's side of the equation. Norm was very enthusiastic, so hopefully we'll make some progress there. I attended the Buena Vista Career Day to talk to the top eighth graders about a career as an elected official. They were enthralled, so everyone. But also, MCOE was there, and I pushed everybody with gladio, and I pushed everybody in that direction. And then Dr. Gus and I are presenting to Washington Union tonight their Outstanding School Award.
Very good. All right, Mary?
I just wanted to say that Danine and I attended the Lobo renovation celebration at Monterey Business College. And if you haven't been to that campus recently, you'll be surprised at how wonderful it looks. They're doing a great job with the money that they've received. And they're still underway of doing even more buildings. And it's just amazing how much nicer the campus looks, at least I think so. And I did go to college there many, 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 many years ago. And then if you didn't attend the Monterey County School Boards Association, I think you missed a good event. It was, I thought, very well organized, well attended. And the Girls' Health and Girls' Hands, as you'll remember, actually won the award. And I think that was one of our three, wasn't it?
I think so.
Think so. Pretty sure it was. So they were all excited, and I think it was well deserving because it is a good program. And as Danine said, we did have a facilities committee meeting. Annette and I attended with about four or five staff members. So there was a lot of input, and I think we had, I don't know, five or six designers, architects, or whatever they are, that came with just tons of color schemes and flooring and walls and countertops. And we were there for over two hours just picking out all these colors and surfaces. And we kind of got stuck on the inside. And I can't describe it unless you can point it out on there. The outside of the building has a certain texture, which is, is that the outside?
This is the outside.
And we were trying to figure out the inside of that same color or material. And we kind of got stuck. So we have to do another meeting for them to bring back additional types of material, colors, et cetera, before we can finalize the color scheme and bring it all back to you. And we also, with the carpeting, we wanted them to explore a little bit more about carpets that were stain resistant because we didn't want to constantly be cleaning or taking out or removing panels within the carpet. So there's a few things that they have to go back, research, and come back with. And I think we're trying to meet later this month still so that we can finalize and then bring a whole color scheme back to the full board for review and approval, I guess. And that won't be until June, I guess. But I think it still keeps us on our timeline, as far as I remember. They're doing a really good job of keeping it on time, I have to say.
We are making sure of that.
Stand on that case, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a good working session.
All right, Sandra?
Yes, I'd just like to share with the board that I attended at the Salinas City Elementary School site visitation with Dr. Gus and with Mr. Porras, who's right over there. And it was so much fun to see the kinders, the second graders, and the sixth graders. You know how active they were in their classrooms. And I think the sixth graders, and correct me if I'm wrong, Danine, they were working on a book called The Red Pony, written by John Stainback. And they were all excited, reading the book and writing down the summary about his experiences and all that stuff. We visited Los Padres Elementary School by John Street, and then we drove to Monterey Park Elementary School. And we were received with a beautiful logage or sign that says, bullying is not allowed. Isn't that nice? You walked in, bullying is not allowed. And the principal, very friendly, and school teachers as well, and the kids. And then finally, we visited Lincoln Elementary School with a brand-new principal. Within the last seven months. And he was previously retired, but he was waiting for his wife to retire. His wife is not retiring yet. So he said, okay, I'll go back to work, and now he's there. He really loves to be a principal. He's really hands-on. And he says, I believe, by seeing the office, that he does have a door open policy, which is everyone is welcome. And they were very in collaboration with everyone, including the P T O, that are coming for free to teach their students how to dance cumbia, salsa, cha-cha-cha. They do exercises, and it's beautiful. What it touched me between those three schools was the fact that as we arrived to Los Padres Elementary School, we visited the first classroom. It was kindergarten kids, right? And you went to one table, and Porras to another table, and I went to a table. In the table that I was approaching the students from, there was a little tiny guy, Juan Jose, still remember his name. And I asked him, what would you like to be when you grow up? And he said, well, I don't want to work out in fields. I want to continue and further my education. And I said to him, good for you. Does your parents work out in the fields? Everyone works in the fields, but I don't want to be like my dad. I want to have a better choice. And you're talking like a little kid, and he's using those words. And I said, damn. And then I asked him to read me a passage fluent in Spanish. And I was astonished the way that he picked up the paper and fluently in Spanish, he went through it, missing any syllable. And I was like, and so what I said to him, I said, you know what? You're such a good girl. Listen to your teacher, pay attention a hundred percent, and always look at her straight into her eyes when she's talking to you. Succeed in what you do, and you will achieve a certification to make all kinds of money. When I finished preaching that to that little Juan Jose kid, the little girl across the table reached out to me and she says, excuse me, can I do the same? And so the teacher, I wasn't even paying attention to the teacher, but she was listening to my words of wisdom. And so she approached me very sentimental. And she said to me, Mrs. Ocampo, I have never had a person talking to my little kids like that, that would you do. I would like to ask you to come back and read to them. Whenever you have a chance, come back and read to the whole class. And you already left the room, and I stayed behind. And I said, can I bring my husband so we can read bilingually? And she goes, you're more than welcome. So I was touched, you know, by those little kids and by her especially. So that was very nice. The second one is that the Monterey County Safety and Health Schools and Committee Coalition, we were there. And you were there also, I mean, like, my colleague here, Mary Claypool, mentioned, pretty well orchestrated. You know, I mean, a lot of good environment, good karma, people from all over. And really, it takes the whole community to make this even happen. And then the other one was that I hear the good news again. And thanks because last year, no, two years ago, through the, what was the title? Oh, guitars. Distribution, I was able to make contact with the director. You know, I checked hands with him, and I asked him, what does Alcany, when we have Norcal? And he said to me, trust you, Campo, name the name of the schools, and we will deliver guitars. So I did mention Alisa Elementary District. And last year, they were providing A D nine I guitars. Well, this year, they came back with sixty new rust guitars. So I'm happy to hear that. I can, it's happening. And lastly, lastly, it was the yes, it was the Awards Teacher of the Year recognition, put out by MCOE with the good staff that we have here. The whole thing was highly decorated beautifully. I mean, the environment, the people, the food, the place. I'm sorry for those who were not able to attend it. They really missed a big event. And what we say, we're here as elected officials to commit, to represent the fiduciary interests of our community. Okay, I'll question. Where are you? So I'll challenge you the next year, be part of this, because we are MCOE. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. Any other board member comments? Virginia, do you have any comments?
I would just add that Jaime and I were at the Farewell to Friends. That's always a nice event as well with our retirees. And it's amazing how many people get to, who stay with us for just a long, long time. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up was just on the homelessness summit, which was put on by Community and Human Services and Gathering for Women. Virginia was there, and I don't know if you want to say anything about it, Virginia?
It was a really good presentation. And the information that was given, the way that it was provided, it was very, very important. It was, it was on this, this side of view of how sometimes we can see homelessness. I have worked in the past with people that are being homeless for years. I have worked in the past with people that are being homeless for years and in. You know, sometimes we can use that as a person and I realize that that person might be just a little bit of help. Just a little bit. So it was very interesting and I got the book. And I haven't read it yet. It's been stolen a lot, but it was great. So I'm really happy that I worked on it, but it went.
Great, yeah, I, I totally agree. I think I don't really have anything to add. That was, it was a wonderful event and it's just a big problem. And workforce housing, which is something we're trying to work on for our teachers and our classified staff, I think. Fits right into that. It's a little different level, but it's important as well. It's very expensive to live here.
May I add something to that? I think homelessness is very attached to mental health, to housing, to finances. So it is, we cannot see that separate one from the other one. They have a really strong connection, so. The more that I get to work in the community, the more that I learn. And especially for the people that just need a little more help, you know? And like I said, it is maybe just sending them to the right agency or the right person to tackle. Sometimes that's required too much, but I see that big connection between one to the other one. Thank you.
Right, any other comments? Okay, we're going to move on, excuse me, to reports from board members, eleven point one, legislation, John.
Yeah, we just, you know, touched on the policy regarding the recently passed legislation. Involving prior claims of sexual abuse by public entities. I shared with you last time that there was a bill being advanced by California Senator. To mitigate that. We all think it's abhorrent and we all look for. For victims to receive justice, but not at the cost of bankrupting school districts. That bill of dieting committee. The California Trial Lawyers are very, very powerful with a whole lot of money and a whole lot of influence. So it's kind of back to the drawing board on that one. The, and one of the, one of the things they shared was that. And one of the reasons that, you know, it kind of went this direction is LA Unified, which has over four hundred. Of these suits is basically going to the bank and they've settled three hundred of them. And it's their intention to basically settle them all. So more to come on that. And then we, we wait for the, the May rebis. And see what, what all of the, as our, our friend from the. Treasurer's Office said, all of this uncertainty, what has that done to budget forecast? That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Eleven point two, Community Human Services, Annette.
Okay, the, the last meeting for Community Human Services was just after our last board meeting. And the focus has been for fundraising this year for that agency. Because of the change in kind of direction for the agency to, to focus on homelessness. Which does not have a lot of governmental support. So it needs to have donations from private people and foundations in order to support that. So continuing that round, they, they've had a lot of donations and been successful with it. Because people want to, to deal with homelessness. And also since Community Human Services provides mental health services to those in our community who can't afford to pay for it. At market rate, that also helps. So I agree with Virginia. It's, you know, goes hand in hand. And as our representative to that board, that is a very, that's what they focus on. Tomorrow will be their annual board retreat and we'll talk more about the direction of the agency. Then I suspect it will continue, it'll be a recommendation to continue on the homelessness focus. Because there's just such a problem in that and to continue the mental health services. That's it.
All right, thank you, Annette. Eleven point three, Child Abuse Prevention Council. So we had our Monterey County Safe and Healthy Schools and Communities Coalition Leadership Breakfast on April twenty fifth. And as several people have mentioned, it was very well attended. There were a lot of community groups coming together to support schools. The Child Abuse Prevention Council did give out their annual awards at that meeting. So that was great to see people working so hard in our community to prevent child abuse. Our next meeting is coming up on June second. Right, so we're going to move on to eleven point four, Monterey County School Board Association, Mary.
I think I gave you my update earlier. You haven't had a meeting, obviously.
All right, item twelve, consideration of items for future meetings. Future resolutions and future agenda items. And Virginia, I know you had mentioned you wanted to speak on this one.
Yes, I would like to recommend to give a. Resolution to a veteran, Alison Solinas. He's a Korean veteran, ninety-five, ninety-six years old. I'm not really sure what this is. But I feel like sometimes we forget about the people that help us to build a free country. And I would like to, to recommend him to receive one of. Uh, what a solution. I can get all the information when I come back to Salinas, to Cindy.
Virginia, what's the name?
Uh, Dwight, Mr. Dwight Boliger.
Dwight, can you say the last name again?
Dwight Boliger. He's from Texas, but he's been living in Salinas for. Since, I think, I think since he was twenty-one or twenty-two years old.
And can you tell us what is the connection to education and what, what are, what would we be recognizing him for?
Well, he has a lot of information, a lot of stories that he has shared with us. And I just see that the school, the students should hear from people that are veterans. And really value the things that we enjoy. Thanks to the people that went to work and helped us to have a free country. To me, it will be very helpful for children to learn his story. If I have a power to make that formation, I will do it because I, I think most, most of our teenagers. They don't understand the story of the United States because they never hear from people that participated in the war before. Or better.
All right, thank you. Any other?
Well, what is the process for something like this? I can't remember. Because normally we do organizations and I don't know, do we do individuals based on some criteria? Or do we need to go back and look at that and?
Yeah, I think we'll need to go back and look at it because I don't think we have any written down criteria, just past practices. And it could be, it could be a person, it could be an organization. It's usually education related, like for example, California Distinguished School Resolutions or. Human trafficking. So let, let me go back and see if there's any kind of archives around that. I know this question came up around Indian community in India. That's only for people who have been educators or, or are students who have.
My wife and I only dated for five months before we decided to get married.
Wow.
Yeah, I get you right away.
So you're, you're very much in love or you're both very stubborn?
All right, so our, excuse me, our next meeting day is May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five at nine AM. Your agenda items are due by May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And item fourteen, meeting is adjourned at one oh two. Oh, in memory, thank you. I was not going to forget. Memory, Jane Allen, meeting adjourned.
Amen.